Making sure my audio works, hear me? Alright, good. Okay, Holly, are you able to take the roll call?
Yes, I'm ready, are you?
I'm ready as I'm gonna get tonight, so welcome everyone to the city council meeting, it's Tuesday, April 14th, and we'll start out with roll call.
Hartlet?
Here.
Bozma?
Here.
Caravelo?
Here.
Doom?
Here.
Haley?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Lagaki?
Uh, her microphone is muted, you can unmute him.
I'm here.
I see ya.
Mieski?
Here.
Reeve?
Here.
Chu Makker?
Here.
Alright, there are eleven Alders present.
Alright, thank you, I'm gonna start off.
Here we go.
Can't hear you, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, you mute, Mr. Mayor, you muted yourself when you meant, when you went to mute all.
Alright, no, I'm unmuted. Alright, we'll try this again, um. Are you with me?
Yep.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to just take a few minutes and thank the staff, the community, and the city council for your efforts and support over the last month or so. The last several weeks have been very difficult, and we expect it will be for quite some time. The good news is Stoughton is pulled together as we always do. As the city, we've been collaborating with Stoughton Hospital, the Stoughton Area School District, Dane County, State of Wisconsin, federal government, cities and villages, leagues of municipalities, other municipalities, our attorneys, community members, and healthcare professionals. I'm extremely proud of our staff. Under trying and never changing circumstances, the clerk's office provided the opportunity to vote in a safe and efficient manner. The Opera House, Library, Senior Center, and Youth Center made painful decisions to close before the governor's orders came out. I believe that the proactive approach that was taken by staff minimized illness and potentially saved lives. They continued to provide services and support to other departments. Park and Recreation continues to implement social distancing measures with the help of community feedback. Public Works employees volunteered for Meals on Wheels, elections, and scheduled an additional leaf and brush pickup. IT department made sure the employees could work remotely to ensure meetings could take place. Planning, utilities, and finance continue to work on projects while supporting teammates in the community. Human Resources, in collaboration with other department heads, drafted numerous employee-related documents that are under consideration tonight. And as always, police, fire, and EMS are prepared to go beyond call of duty. We will all continue to provide services the best we can, and we patiently look forward to the day when we can provide the rest of the services and events we all miss. As we move through the next stages, please use best practices. Be kind and support each other and our local businesses. So, thanks to all you, and we'll get through the meeting here tonight. I do have some communications in the packet, you'll see some proclamations. It's Volunteer Week. We had some nominations for Volunteer of the Year for Tricia Seuss Charleston and Sharon Mason Bozma. Stoughton Friend of the Youth was Cynthia Schlegel. And Stoughton Business of the Year was Kendall and Trish Gulseth for the Coffee Cup. And we want to recognize them tonight. And hopefully, we'll have a get-together at a later date to honor those that have been volunteers in our community, some of them for many years. Thanks to them. The next communication we have is comes from Clerk's Department, and Holly would like to give an election update.
Alright, can everyone hear me?
Yes, Ken.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, so I just wanted to start off by thanking everyone that was a part of the election this past Tuesday. It was a lot of collaboration and a lot of help from a lot of different people. I think we had almost every city department involved in some way to make it happen. My staff worked incredibly hard to pull this off, to make sure people got their absentee ballots, to make sure we had a polling location and that that was safe. So, my staff, Candy Christian, Judy Krebs, and Lydia Moore, thank you very much. I know I'm gonna miss them people here, so I'm not going to say everyone by name, but all of my poll workers worked extremely hard. I got very positive feedback from voters, saying that they were very professional and calm, and it was one of the best voting experiences that they've had in several years. So, thank you to all the poll workers that did that. Special thank you to Martin Briggs, the Planning Department, who constructed twenty Plexiglas shields, I think in less than a week, so that all of our poll workers were safe. We had some National Guard members that were there that provided support to us on Election Day as well. The Public Works Department worked hard to set everything up for us the day of the election. Also, thank you to the SPAC and SEA for allowing us to use their space for the election. We combined our locations to one single location for this election, just due to not knowing if we were gonna have enough poll workers, or if we were going to have enough polling locations to pull this one off. I think I already said this, but this was truly a community effort. I could not have done this without everyone involved. A lot of people stepped up when they needed to, so thank you for everyone that helped out with this election. I've been getting a lot of questions about participation, so I'll just kind of briefly go over that. So, the number of people that voted was four thousand four hundred and fifty-nine people, and that is fifty-five percent of registered voters in Stoughton. Of that eight hundred and twenty-one people voted in person, and three thousand six hundred and thirty-nine ballots, absentee ballots were counted. About eighty-two percent of the people that voted voted absentee. We completed our canvas last night, so those are the official numbers. I believe, I've been getting a lot of questions about how this compares to 2016. 2016 was obviously different in regards to there being a primary in both parties, but we did have about sixty-four percent turnout in 2016, so participation was down a bit. But I think, given the circumstances, that, I mean, we were well above the state average in regards to turnout. So, thank you to everyone that helped make this a success. And if anyone has any questions regarding the election, I will gladly answer those.
Okay, do any Alders have any, any comments they'd like to make tonight, any communications? Alright, hearing none. We'll get into our agenda here. The first item is, a ministry reports are in the packet. Nobody signed up for the public comment period. So, we can move right in to the consent agenda. So, we'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's all moved.
Okay.
Motion by Jensen, a second by Hirsch. The only thing in there is the council minutes, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. There's no old business, we have new business. And that would be the, the hearing for, for discussion and possible action on the decision on the complaints revocation of the Class B Reserve Combination License held by Shakers Saloon. Doing business at Shakers Saloon in 111 Shelley Drive. We do have a recommendation from Public Safety, all of Kristen Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor Swidely. Yeah, the recommendation is to revoke, it was a unanimous decision on February 25th, 2020. You all have read the summation that was submitted by our attorney. I'm assuming that everyone has signed their, the document showing that they have read it. I believe that, I believe that it is self-explanatory, and I would stand by that recommendation.
I didn't hear you, did you make a motion?
Yes, the motion would be to accept the recommendation.
Was there a second? Was there a second on the motion?
Second.
Um, that was all the person, alright. Our, okay, so, at this point, we have a motion and a second. I, I believe we had offered the opportunity for those to speak on this issue. I'm not really sure how this typically goes. We'll have to determine who wants to go first here.
I, I think Attorney Ritter could probably walk us through this part.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, typically, the person objecting to the, to the report would make the first argument with the complainant going next, but that's up to the council if you want to do it differently.
That sounds fine with me unless there's objection from the council.
No objection.
Alright, and we have representatives in from, Mr. Watt, did you want to speak?
Yes, Mayor, briefly, thank you, I do appreciate it. I want to thank you and the council once again for providing my client, Shakers Saloon, the opportunity to be heard in this matter. I understand that it is under unprecedented and extraordinary circumstances, so I appreciate all the effort that's gone into hosting this meeting, and also to all the efforts that the council and public servants of the city of Stone are doing to keep us all safe, given current circumstances. Certainly, while the issue of Shakers Saloon's license is important to this council, and certainly to my client, I do obviously understand there are issues of health and safety at stake during this meeting, so I hope to be brief, and for the most part, let my written argument that was submitted a couple of weeks ago, or maybe almost a month ago now, speak for itself. That, that said, there are a couple of points that I wish to reiterate. Obviously, if you've read my written submission, my client feels that the application of the facts to the law here, he's the counsel with a clear choice to take no action against Shakers Saloon. The committee's recommendation tries to make Mr. Kittleson and Shakers Saloon one person in terms of knowledge, but two people in terms of action. It is Shakers' position that the agent and the company cannot be two separate people for the purposes of quote-unquote "another person" under the count and statute on which the committee's recommendation is based. The committee believes that my client's argument leads to absurd results. In making that recommendation, it puts forth a hypothetical that if all the principals of Shakers Saloon had been arrested with possession of controlled substance, then that would allow it to sidestep the scrutiny of this body. First, I don't believe that that is an absurd result, I think that's what the law says. And second, it's also not true. There are other avenues under which the statutes would allow for a potential suspension or revocation. My counter is a different hypothetical, and one that is a bit more in line with the facts of this case than the committees. For instance, imagine if Mr. Kittleson, as an individual natural person, held the license in his name, but everything else remained the same. Well, then the law would prohibit this council from revoking that license, because the licensee and the party arrested with the alleged controlled substance clearly and undoubtedly give the same person and not another person as required by the statute. To, to highlight this point, I want to point to Section 12504 Sub 6A of the Wisconsin statutes. Those state in part that no limited liability company organized under the laws of Wisconsin may be issued an alcohol beverage license unless the entity first appoints a manager in the manner prescribed by the issuing authority. It also states that it vests in the agent full authority and control of the premises described in the license of the entity that the licensee could have and exercise if it were a natural person. Even the chief's counsel argued at length in his written submission about how members of an LLC are not personally liable and actually their natural person agents. Same principle should apply here. The chief's counsel even quoted from the statute I just cited, but conveniently, he cut off a bit about quote "if it were a natural person," unquote. There's no doubt, Kittleson was the named agent vested with this authority on the license granted to Shakers Saloon by this council. And that's Exhibit 2 from the hearing, that would have been included with the recommendation that you received. The law requires that some natural person be named the agent of an LLC. That agent was Kittleson during the time of his arrest. In other words, Kittleson was Shakers, and Shakers was Kittleson. When a natural person is listed as the agent on an LLC license, that person ceases to be another distinct person apart from the entity. If the council could separate the entity from the natural person, which the committee has recommended, the definition of person in the statutes would not distinctly single out, quote, "an owner of a single-owner entity that is disregarded for tax purposes." Instead, that would be completely unnecessary. Shakers is not trying to create any ambiguity in the statute as suggested by the chief's counsel. In fact, it is abiding by the longstanding rules of statutory construction. Any words or phrases of a statute must mean something and cannot be deemed unnecessary or mere surplusage. Simply put, Kittleson was not quote-unquote "another person" for the purposes of Section 125.12 Sub 2AG6. To decide otherwise would be to ignore the clear letter of the law. Moreover, Section 125.12 Sub 2AG would have given this council other avenues by which to revoke the licenses. For instance, subsection 2 allows for revocation for the keeping of an indecent house. However, the committee wisely realized that revocation under this law was too premature, given there's no evidence of any drug distribution on the premises of Shakers Saloon. Another avenue would have been subsection 5, which would allow for revocation if Kittleson were convicted. Again, that is too premature, because the presumption of innocence, until proven otherwise, still means something. Finally, subsection 4 is a catch-all that would allow for revocation if the licensee did not possess the qualifications to hold a license under the statutes. Most statutes allow for an LLC to be denied a license based on the arrest records of its principles, with consideration for certain employment discrimination statutes. But Chief liked to not pursue that argument, and instead, he pursued the riskier avenues in which the facts do not fit the law. There is also an issue of intent. The chief's counsel focused on whether there was an intent to distribute, saying the lack of any actual distribution is irrelevant. But there's no evidence of intent, other than the amount that was allegedly seized during the arrest. There were no paraphernalia, no scales, no baggies, no large amounts of cash. The alleged substance was not separated for distribution. So, yes, the criminal law allows for a presumption of intent based on amounts, but there have been no finding of this until Mr. Kittleson, as Mr. Kittleson, awaits his day in court. And this is precisely why the statutes for license revocation talk about conviction of intent to deliver and not an arrest. The legal presumption of intent can be overcome. It does not matter how absolute Detective Hill may have been in his belief of Kittleson's intent, he can get inside his head. And in fact, the evidence shows that Mr. Kittleson specifically stated to the arrest team that the substances were for his personal use. But, all that issues regarding Mr. Kittleson are moot, because Mr. Kittleson's gone. After the initial hearing, the committee made it clear to Shakers that it wanted Kittleson out of the picture. Upon hearing that, Shakers did the most it could to push Kittleson aside and stripped him of any decision-making authority of the corporation or the company. The LLC statutes and Shakers' own operating agreement left it no recourse to force Kittleson's complete divestment without exposing itself to additional liability. Regardless, Shakers' actions were not enough for the committee, and the committee recommended revocation. After that period, Kittleson did divest himself from the LLC and removed his property from the premises. So, contrary to what the chief's counsel and the committee assert, the actions taken by Shakers are not a minimum amount, but they're the absolute maximum that could have been done without exposing it to liability. Both the committee and the chief take counsel, take issue with the timing of Shakers' actions as well. But it's a bit disingenuous for counsel for the chief to sit here and argue that Shakers delayed in pushing Kittleson aside, since he knows the parties were attempting to negotiate a stipulation at the recommendation of the committee through the morning of the February 25th hearing. Thus, to blame Shakers' response on the timing of negotiations seems like nothing but a bit disingenuous. We can tell the parties were not going to stipulate, Shakers took action, and took the strongest action it could. So, now it's time to make a decision. Clearly, Shakers' position is that the statutes do not allow for the council to impugn Shakers' knowledge from its agent Kittleson, while simultaneously treating Kittleson as another person. The problem is that there's no case law, unfortunately, to help guide this council, or quite frankly, us the attorneys, on this point of contention. The only way to find that out is to have the circuit court, and then, if necessary, the Court of Appeals or Supreme Court make a determination based on the facts of the law. At least then, there would be guidance for future cities and licensing authorities in a similar situation. Obviously, though, that is an expensive endeavor, but Mr. Meyer really has nothing else to lose by pursuing his rights with the courts that this council recommends revocation. And don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't mean to say this is a threat, but it's simply a reality. Mr. Myers has invested thirty thousand dollars of his own money into this business. He's on the hook for more than seventy thousand dollars on a personal guarantee for a lease. And, very loose whether we disagree, I don't think it's an unreasonable interpretation of the law that Shakers is advancing here, and one that a court could imminently find in Shakers' favor. So, given these facts and the law, revocation seems a bit heavy-handed. Again, other than the one incident here that's at issue, which is certainly serious, Shakers has had no issues, no fights or other disturbances, not even a police call. Mr. Myers cooperated with his body as much as he could. And so luckily, I think there's a win-win solution for all involved. The statute under which you are authorized to make a decision on this license pursuant to this hearing and argument, Section 125.12 Sub 2B2 says that you have a decision to either suspend the license for between ten to ninety days, or revoke the license. Again, given the facts here, revocation seems heavy-handed. Shakers will commit, and that it will not object or take this matter further with a suspension through June 1st, which is forty-eight days. Thus, this will allow the city to punish Shakers for its actions, but it will also allow Shakers then, after June 1st, if all things working out perfectly, would allow it to be there for the city of Stone and its residents at a time when people need a place to go. Once we're through the worst of this pandemic and the economy gets its footing. Shakers can be a place for stone residents to go for a sense of community after being cooped up in homes for weeks on end. Shakers can be a place for them to go share a beer, to laugh, to talk, to sing and dance. All communities need places like Shakers Saloon now more than ever. Kittleson's gone, and Mr. Meyer is committed to working with the city to make Shakers something they can be proud of. Therefore, even though I do not believe the chief here has met its burden to take any action, Shakers would recommend and would not object, as I said, to a suspension until June 1st. So, I would humbly ask and request that the recommendation be amended, that Shakers will accept, again, and not object to a suspension through that period. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter, you'd be next, or would?
Mr. Monty would be next. Just a quick note.
Okay, that would be.
I think we're getting some feedback from Ms. Huffman. If you could, please, if anyone who's not talking, please mute your mic, and we'll get less feedback, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Mancy's going next?
Rick, you're muted.
The icon says he's not. Maybe it's on your keyboard?
Is it possible, just use his phone to call in?
Usual, try now, Rick.
Something with his computer is, microphone's not active.
Yeah, there is a call-in number if he wants to call in.
Do you need the number, Rick? One three S, two two no.
I'll see if I can get him the number.
Alright, can you hear me?
Now we can, yep. Speak again.
Alright, we'll give this another try.
Well, we can hear you.
I will thank you, everyone, for flying me the opportunity presented tonight. I know these are unprecedented times, like has already been stated, but this is an important case. Holding a liquor license is a privilege and comes with great responsibility. State and city law impose numerous restrictions on licensees for this reason. When a licensee commits an egregious violation and betrays the trust bestowed upon them, revocation is the only response. This is such a case. Shakers, the holders of Combination Class B liquor license, knowingly allowed Mr. Kittleson on his premises with the intent to deliver cocaine. This was no minor offense, but an egregious liquor law violation that shows Shakers does not deserve the privilege of holding a liquor license. I think it's important to, just to reiterate the facts, because they're extremely important to this case, and the essential details are uncontroversial. Mr. Kittleson brought approximately two and a half ounces of cocaine to Shakers Saloon on December 18th, 2019. On that day, police arrested Mr. Kittleson at Shakers related to him selling cocaine during a previous controlled buy conducted by the EEA. Police located an ounce of cocaine on Mr. Kittleson, and around another ounce and a half within Mr. Kittleson's personal belongings in the office area of the bar. Detective Hill, a Stoughton police officer with over twenty years of experience who had worked dozens of drug investigations, testified that two and a half ounces of cocaine equates to approximately seven doses, or personal, or seventy individual uses of cocaine. In his opinion, seventy doses is for delivery, not personal use. The cocaine located in the office area was packaged The cocaine located in the office area was packaged in individual bags. Detective Hill explained the packaging method indicated it was for selling, not personal use. Detective also found a drug ledger that contained names, dollar amounts, and, uh, fractions for tracking drug sales in Mr. Kittleson's truck. Detective Hill, based on his training and experience, determined that Mr. Kittleson possessed cocaine with the intent to deliver. Again, facts that are uncontroversial here. Also, Shakers is an LLC owned by Mr. Kittleson and Steve Meyer. Shakers has a combination class B liquor license, and Mr. Kittleson was Shakers' registered agent on December eighteenth, or the time that he was arrested. So the PSC found that revocation was appropriate, or the public service committee, I should say, found that revocation was appropriate for violating state and local codes that prohibits a local or a licensee from allowing another person on a licensed premises with the intent to deliver a controlled substance. So just a quick breakdown of those elements, you've got licensee, number one, number two, allowed another person on the premises. Number three, that person possessed a controlled substance with the intent to deliver. Number four, that occurred with a licensee's knowledge. First element, uh, there's no question here that it's satisfied. PSC correctly found in the, uh, Shakers is the licensee, both parties have admitted to that. Second element is also satisfied here because Kittleson is another person because he's not the license holder. The liquor laws clearly state that an LLC is distinct from a natural person. Under the liquor laws, an LLC can be a person or a natural person. The LLC, the LLC statutes clearly demonstrate that an LLC is separate from its members. That is why the members are not liable for the actions of the LLC. Member property is not LLC property. The list goes on, that it's in the written arguments. Further, the statute doesn't put any special, the liquor law statutes don't put any special requirements on LLCs. There's no limiting language about the statute not applying to members of LLC. Thus, the only conclusion here is that they're separate and distinct. There's no question that, and again, there's no question that Mr. Kittleson was on the license premises of Shakers. Shakers tries to argue that the LLC, a structurally created legal entity, is the same person as Mr. Kittleson. That is incorrect. There's no statute or law that makes a natural person and an LLC a single entity. Shakers could not be charged with possession of cocaine, only Mr. Kittleson could. Just like the license that is issued to Shakers is not issued to Mr. Kittleson, as because the two are distinct. Third element here is also met, that Mr. Kittleson, while on the Shakers premises, possessed cocaine with the intent to deliver. Detective Hill offered unrefuted testimony to that point, establishing that Kittleson possessed cocaine with the intent to deliver. The amount, two and a half ounces or seventy doses, the packaging, and the drug ledger all conclusively show intent to deliver. Shakers offered no evidence to refute Detective Hill's testimony. Instead, Shakers continued to argue that no drug delivery took place on the licensed premises, despite that not being an actual requirement to support revocation. The only requirement is that the person possessed cocaine with the intent to deliver. Actual delivery does not a requirement. Chief Leck has clearly established that, uh, the intent element in this case, based on the amount of cocaine, the way it was packaged, and the drug ledger. Under the fourth element that, uh, listed, Mr. Kittleson passed his knowledge on of his illegal acts to Shakers, the licensee. Shakers has acknowledged that corporate entities can only act through their agents and members. Indeed, the LLC law specifically provides that the quote, "knowledge of a member acting in a particular matter acquired while a member operates as notice to or knowledge of a limited liability company." That clearly establishes that a member of an LLC can pass their knowledge on to the LLC. Further, Mr. Kittleson was a registered agent for Shakers. Mr. Meyer testified to the fact that Mr. Kittleson ran the day-to-day operations of the business. He was the manager of the business. If Mr. Kittleson cannot grant knowledge to the LLC, then no one could under Shakers' argument. Thus, Shakers knowingly allowed another person, Kittleson, on its premises, and Mr. Kittleson possessed cocaine with the intent to deliver. Shakers' arguments would carve a huge loophole in the revocation statute for LLC. The state has made its intent clear. Licensees that allow others to possess controlled substances on a licensed premises must suffer consequences. Shakers' interpretation flies in the face of that clear intent by trying to create an exception for LLCs. That would lead to an absurd result. And as the public safety committee recommendation aptly noted, that interpretation would make an LLC immune from prosecution if all members of the LLC engaged in the same drug dealing. That is not a reasonable interpretation. Shakers also essentially argued that, well, what happened was wrong, but that doesn't warrant revocation. Foremost, if this egregious act does not rise to the level of demanding revocation, then nothing ever will under Shakers' analysis. Further, Shakers' corporate restructuring is too little, too late. Importantly, throughout this entire process, Shakers has only taken the minimum action that it thought necessary at every step of the proceeding. Mr. Kittleson was arrested on December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. At the PSC hearing, Shakers representatives repeatedly asserted that they took Kittleson's actions seriously and that they would ensure that nothing would happen in the future. Yet they did not do anything following his arrest. If Mr. Meyer was not aware of Mr. Kittleson's activities before, he certainly became aware that day. Yet Mr. Kittleson remained the registered agent of Shakers. Mr. Kittleson maintained his duties of running the basis's day-to-day operation. By February thirteenth, twenty twenty, the day of the revocation hearing, Shakers had taken no steps to reform its business. Everything had remained the same as if it were December eighteenth. So despite the assertions of Shakers that it took Kittleson's conduct seriously, Shakers' actions told a different story. Following the hearing, the PSC requested that the parties try to resolve a case, and the parties were unable to do so. Uh, then at the February twenty-sixth PSC committee meeting, Shakers introduced its revised corporate structure that kept Kittleson as an owner of the business, but gave managerial duties to others. That minimal step would have still allowed Kittleson to continue to profit from the, from the business and still have some, uh, ability to access the property. His friend of over twenty years, Steve Meyer, would have still been in business with Mr. Kittleson. And also on February thirteenth, Shakers finally submitted an application for a new registered agent, almost three months after Kittleson's arrest. However, there is no way for the city to enforce any of the modifications that Shakers had suggested in his corporate structure. Indeed, Kittleson still wanted to have access to his personal property at the premises, and the corporate restructuring still would have allowed him room to get access for that. It was not until the PSC recommended revocation that Shakers removed Kittleson from the business. So besides the fact that those corporate restructuring documents are evidence that's not admissible at this stage of the proceeding, it took an actual adverse finding for Shakers to take the minimum concrete action here. Those aren't the actions of a business acknowledging the seriousness of an owner's conduct or evidence of understanding of the amount of responsibility that comes with the privilege of a liquor license. Additionally, there's still no way to ensure that Mr. Kittleson won't have any involvement going forward. He's not banned from the premises, that it's impossible to put a condition on at this point. In short, this has shown that Shakers cannot be trusted with a license, and the common counsel should reaffirm, or affirm the PSC decision. All told, the PSC report and recommendations speak for itself. The record provides a significant factual basis to support the decision and is completely supported by law. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Reiter, did you have anything?
I have no, uh, no argument to make. I'm available for any, uh, questions the, uh, council may have.
Are there any questions from any of the council members?
I'm curious to know whether Mr. Kittleson is, is he currently incarcerated or is he out, uh, out on bail or something? And do we know what his, uh, criminal trial date would be?
The, the last information I had was that he was, uh, still awaiting trial. Uh, I don't know that a date had been set at that point, but, um, I have not checked recently.
Thank you.
That would be the same information that we have is that he's pending trial.
Are there any other questions, um, uh, relation to this case?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, first off, I was under, now understanding that, uh, the total LLC is under Steve Meyer's name?
No.
No, Brad Dillman.
Bradley Dillman.
I thought it said that a hundred percent that Steve is a hundred percent owner now. Did I misread that somewhere?
He, he's a hundred percent owner, but the LLC registered agent is in my name.
Mr., uh, Mayor, uh, can you redress that question?
Sure.
So, uh, this, so yes, Mr. Meyer is a hundred percent owner, as Mr. Dillman said. Um, uh, the, the corporate structure that was changed in between the two PSC hearings remains intact. Otherwise, it's still a manager-managed LLC, which means that Mr. Dillman, Mr. Meyer, and Mr. Quisling, um, are the managers kind of equivalent to a board of directors for a corporation, if you were, um, for the LLC. But Mr. Meyer is now a hundred percent owner. That is correct.
So, um, Mr. Kittleson is no longer have anything to do with Shakers at this time?
Correct. His property has been removed and he has been banned from the premises.
Mr. Kittleson has absolutely nothing to do with Shaker's saloon at all. He's not on the bank, he's not on, he's not, he's not a shareholder, he doesn't draw any dividends, he's out, kick, caboodle. My size fifteen shoe, he's out completely. He cannot come back down to the bar. The city council made that very, very, I don't want him anywhere near what we have going.
We, we went, we took measures to make sure we changed, uh, changed all door locks, uh, padlocks, uh, anything that he had access to. Uh, we didn't want, we wanted to make sure he didn't make copies of any keys or codes or anything like that. We had, uh, locks, unlocks come in and literally change safe, front door, anything that, uh, that he might have had access to, and it's all been changed over. So, uh, Steve Meyer and myself are the only two people that have access to it.
He has no personal items in the bar. He is completely removed from the company and from the bar, and City of Stoughton will not have to worry about Dale.
And it's, and it's a two-thirds vote, uh, if he even, if he needs to come back onto the premises or any, I'm just, for anything.
He's not coming back down.
I realize that, but he needs to get anything out of there that.
He doesn't need, Brad, stop. He's not coming back down to the bar, guys, okay? Period. Not, all of his possessions are gone. Not. Appreciate the city council, look forward to working with the city officials to make Shaker's saloon in this, uh, town of Stoughton beautiful.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I had a couple of follow-up questions.
Hang on just a sec. Regina had a follow-up. Go ahead.
All right.
Right, so, I, one, I want to commend, uh, Public Safety Commission and Chief Leck for all their work and the, the lawyers on both sides for all their due diligence and, uh, for having a really, I think, professional hearing and, um, evidence-based and, uh, you know, I think it was very well-written. Um, I think we got rid of a really bad actor in our community, and I commend the, the police and, you know, the other officers involved to get rid of somebody in our community that wasn't gonna, didn't have our community in its best interest. Um, I do realize that the Shakers did not, uh, quickly get rid of, uh, Mr. Kittleson as, you know, the, the committee wanted to or what the lawyers thought. Um, I do see progress. Um, I do see it's a local business. I, I guess I'm, I'm really kind of struggling here because I don't want to put a business out. Um, but I also don't know for sure how serious they are about this license. And so I do like the idea of, you know, a suspension for a period of time and to, for them to get their business in order and then, you know, and to revisit it maybe at the renewal time or something, but I, I really, I, I think we achieved what we wanted to achieve. We got rid of a bad actor in our community, and, uh, and I commend you guys for that.
I support Regina with that.
Any other question?
I, I also, this is Jean, um, from the committee. Um, when was his personal, uh, you guys had some stereo equipment and you say that's now removed? Just out of curiosity, when was that removed?
Counsel or all the women, I, I, I'll defer to Mr. Meyer, Mr. Dillman on that. I believe it was sometime in the last couple of weeks, if I recall, but days blend together nowadays, so I'm not exactly sure. Steve or Brad or Josh, can either of you, um, talk to that?
Yeah, that was Josh.
Um, Josh.
Yeah.
About two weeks ago.
It was, uh, uh, April second, to be exact, Thursday, April second.
And, and the comments, I can only speak for myself on the committee, yes, I was troubled by Mr. Kittleson, um, remaining in various ways, whether it was property or as an owner, even though he perhaps wasn't an agent anymore. Um, and I, it was a goal to have that him removed as he awaits trial, at least on my part. Um, I am glad to hear that he is, um, no longer welcome on your premises. And that's really not a thing that the city of Stoughton, as far as I know, that us or the police can enforce. And so, um, I'm hoping that you guys have had a very clear and, um, maybe even somewhat mutual that he has agreed it's not in his best interest to go there. I'm wondering if anyone can comment about how he is staying off of the property and, um, what you are doing to try to ensure that, that it remains as peaceful as possible with him being off the property.
So, I will, hold on, guys, real quick. Let's, let me, I want to address, I'll let you guys address what you're doing to address to make sure that he stays off. I will say that it was, it was mutual, uh, you know, Mr. Manthe had talked about Shakers, you know, pushing Mr. Kittleson out, but again, as I've stated consistently throughout this process, Shakers did not have any avenue to boot or divest Mr. Kittleson of his investment in the corporation absent a conviction, um, or absent actually a, a revocation, um, could conceivably, um, you know, but only until the revocation actually happens. So, uh, Mr. Kittleson did recognize, I do believe, I don't want to speak for him, but believe that, you know, half interest in a, in a bar with no liquor license isn't much of, isn't worth much of anything. So, uh, the parties did, after the last hearing, work together to, to get that done. Um, in terms of keeping him off the premises, my clients, the client has assured me that they're going to do that. I'll let Brad and, and Josh and/or Steve talk to, to what they're going to do, um, regards to that.
All the combination locks have been changed. He has no access to the building. He's not on any bank account. He's not on, he's totally divested from the company. You will not have to worry about Dale Kittleson in your community. Um, I, I appreciate and, and, and a great honor, the fact that, um, the fact that you're, that your consideration to keep the bar there.
Um, I want to, I would like to say if, there is going to be no reason for him to be there, but if he ends up, I find out that he's on the premise, we will file charges against him because for trespass. That's basically it. I mean, he, he will not be on that premise, and if I find out that he came down there for any reason whatsoever, um, I would not hesitate to call the cops. I mean, seriously, I, I, I expressed my disdain for him in the past and it states.
Thank you, Bradley, for responding to my question. I, I appreciatively that you guys have, have addressed it. And just given the things that I'm hearing, I too am willing to, even though it has been a haul, I'm willing to look at suspension and, um, discussion of that as an option and not just revocation.
I have a question, Tim.
Go ahead, Sid.
Yeah, uh, Sid Borstman here. Um, in the event of a revocation, what is the process for reapplying for a liquor license after that? Um, do we have, uh, do we have a policy about that? Do we have ordinance, uh, related to? And, and I, I was just sitting here thinking about whether, what, what if, uh, an LLC would, uh, establish under a different LLC name and, and apply for a license? Would that, would that be a possibility? uh, establish under a different LLC name and, and apply for a license? Would that, would that be a possibility?
Um, I'll let the attorneys answer. I believe there's a state statute. Which, which attorney would like to address that one?
Alan was trying to speak, but he's muted.
I'll try it again. Can you hear me?
All right, thank you.
Your ordinances do provide that if a license is revoked, uh, no license can be issued for the next 12 months for either the same licensee or for the same premises. So, a, a new LLC could be formed, but a license could not be issued for that particular, uh, premises that they're in.
And what about, what about if there was a sale of the property? Could, uh, could a new owner then establish a, an establishment, uh, with a liquor, uh, and apply for a liquor license?
Not, not at the same building. No, the, the organ says that the same premises cannot be licensed for 12 months.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I guess the follow-up is possible. It just takes a lot longer to unmute these days. Um, I, I guess like, I guess said, I, we got bad, rid of the bad actor and I really, you know, with the total revocation of this, we're really, uh, not only hurting, you know, Shakers, but if they move out, anybody coming in, we're really hurting the, the landlord of that building because he can't, you know, rent it to anybody else with a liquor license, that can get a liquor license for over 12 months. So we're really hurting not only Shakers, but also hurting the landlord. And yes, it's a very unfortunate thing that happened and I, um, I'm taking Steve and Bradley's word that they actually did not know anything that's going on. And by God, if we do find something that they did know through like a court hearing or something like that, then I think we'll have to revisit this. But I guess I would still propose that we suspend their license for six months. And, uh, and then, you know, give them time to reorganize, give them time to get everything in order and, um, that's what I would propose.
Uh, so Alan, can you review the, the suspension timeline? Again, I don't believe six months is an option.
No, the, uh, minimum suspension is, um, is 10 days and the maximum suspension would be 90 days.
Okay, then 90 days.
Effective, effective from what date would it, would it be 90 days?
Under your ordinances, the, uh, suspension takes effect at 12 midnight on the seventh day after your determination.
And when are they due up for, um, a renewal?
I think it's the end of June.
I'll, I can clarify, but I think it's Ju- June 30th.
It may make sense.
Current license would expire June 30th and the new license would, um, take effect July 1st. I'm not exactly sure how, um, the renewal process would go.
I have a question as well.
And this is Jean. I had a question. If, if, um, we are open to suspension, given what's going on with COVID and given, I'm just trying to choose a, a, a wise period of time. Um, I, I have, I would be open to making an amendment to the committee's recommendation that we consider a suspension. I'd just like to do something that is wise, that allows them to, I believe they've probably got their house in order. I don't think that there's anything else that we'd be asking for. And in light of COVID, I'm just sort of wondering what may make sense for a timeframe.
I have a question, uh, for Holly. Um, so when we, in our last council meeting, denied the, uh, Mr. Dillman as the agent, that effectively left Shakers without a license in the, in the interim, right?
I believe so, but, uh, Attorney Ryder can hop in here.
I, in a, in effect, it left them with a license, but one that can't be used to sell liquor. So it wasn't actually revoked, but it couldn't be used until a new agent is approved by the council.
Can I address that? We've been closed down since the, that date.
Okay.
We have not, we've not, we've only been down there to, to make some minor changes on things, change locks and, uh, basically do some cleanup and things of that nature, but we've not, uh, since that last meeting, we have not, uh, uh, been open for business.
Okay, are there any other questions?
We've already, we've done pretty much.
So, I think, um, I'm also leaning toward, um, suspension as a reasonable option. And I think, having effectively, um, suspended the license, um, about a month ago, that it might be reasonable to say, uh, we suspend it until 90 days from that date. So that would put us in a box. That would put us up, I don't know what 90 days is exactly, but that's early June.
I guess I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
I'll agree with that also.
So we don't currently have a motion on the table, just so everyone knows.
Yeah. Well, the motion on the table right now is for revocation.
Yes, you're right.
Yep. So that's still on the table. So, um, we'd either vote on that or somebody would have to amend that.
Did any other, uh, PSC committee members want to say something? Um, and if you do not, I will go forward and make an amendment that we, and thank you, I, I, I yield.
Yes, I, I think, uh, we need, this is Greg. Uh, I think we need to consider that, uh, that there is complications with, if there is a suspension and then something else does happen where it would warrant, uh, the revocation again. You're talking about additional costs. You're also talking about different, uh, issues, legal issues that could arise from that. I think the chief might want to speak to that. Uh, Chief Leck, do you have any comments on that?
Well, the only comment I can make is if we do have to proceed with, uh, recommendation of non-renewal, that in essence starts the same process over again. So yes, you would be looking at, uh, more expense for doing that.
Okay. So I think that's something that we need to consider. Um, uh, I would not, from, from my point of view, I would not, uh, uh, support, uh, a suspension. Uh, I think the revocation is required.
I have a couple of questions for the chief. Um, I think I heard from, from, uh, the attorney that they haven't had any incidents down there and no police calls. Can you verify that?
Well, there is a pending charge of, uh, open after hours, uh, that was issued prior to, uh, their loss of agent.
Does anybody else have any questions? So right now, there was a motion on the table. Was somebody looking to amend it? Or do you want to vote on the motion and see where it goes and come back if it fails? Or what is the pleasure of the council here?
I'm not sure. This is Jean. I'm not sure I understand, um, the potential costs around non-renewal, if they're due for their renewal on July 1. Um, I would like to, I, I believe that we have possibly accomplished what we wanted around this charge and the drugs. When it comes to the license, I, I guess I just don't understand the potential costs and what we could incur down the road, um, if we were to seek suspension.
Um, this is Regina. I, I agree with you because if we're suspending and there should, for renewal, I don't see that there's going to be a problem with renewal unless something happens between the end of the suspension and the renewal time. Um, I, that would just be really, um, silly on their part to, uh, not heed all this warning and all this expense on their part, not to like follow the rules, the letter, um, for a renewal. So I don't understand what the expense is either. So I guess, you know, Jean, if you were going to make a motion, I, I would support it.
I'm willing to do so, but can Chief Leck and Greg, um, Alder Jensen, are you able to speak to, uh, those potential concerns? Or Greg, can you speak more to why you're, why you're suggesting revocation given, given your position as head of this? Do you know something that we don't?
Are you asking Jean?
I, I am. You and Chief Leck, can you help fill in those question marks that we have about the timing and, and extra costs?
Well, right, right now, uh, with, uh, what Attorney Ryder was saying, it would be seven days after, if, a decision today. So, um, you're looking at, uh, right now until July 1st, you're looking at 71 days. So if you couldn't really do the 90 days, that would push it out past the renewal time. Uh, if you're going to do this, you would probably have to go with the 48 days that was suggested, uh, by their lawyer. Um, I would, I do not feel that that's appropriate. Um, the, you're looking at, uh, additional lawyer costs if, if the recommendation is to reject, uh, come time for renewal. Um, and I, I think that the, the offense that, uh, that caused this, uh, hearing to be, uh, held, uh, was, uh, substantial and that, uh, it's, it is appropriate for us to, uh, uh, to revoke this license at this time.
Um, I'll defer to the attorneys to let you know what, uh, process is involved in a, uh, recommendation of non-renewal. I believe it's pretty much the same process as a revocation.
What's the door, buddy?
I'm willing, this is Jean and I'm willing to go forward and offer an amendment to the Public Safety Commission that we, um, consider, or that we consider suspending, um, for a period of 48 days, though I'm not opposed to 71, but I'm saying in the amendment for a period of 48 days because it appears to be the wise direction. Um, and I so move.
Sure, second?
All second.
Second by Hirsch. Does everybody understand the motion?
No, I'd like you to go over the motion.
Okay, so the, the amendment would, instead of revocation, the amendment would, would suspend her license for 48 days, um, after the, the date that, uh, the attorney, uh, communicated earlier.
So can we actually figure out what the date is that they would be suspended to? Can somebody actually figure that out so everybody knows?
What the attorney recommended.
I, I guess since I've calculated that, I can speak to it. Um, this is Attorney Watt. So that would be June 1 was my target date. That did not account for the seven-day effective period between the decision, apparently what Mr. Reuters had said, uh, between the decision and when it actually takes effect. So it would be another week. So I guess June 8th would be, um, be the effective end date.
Okay, so the amendment would be suspended for 48 days, which would be somewhere around June 8th. Are there any questions or comments about the amendment?
June 8th happens to be exactly 90 days from our last council meeting as well. Coincidentally.
If you made it 60 days, then we're going through June 30th.
Greg, uh, Alder Jensen, sorry, a question for Alder Jensen.
Jean.
If we were to go with, my apologies, uh, the, the period of time that you just suggested, which is 60 days instead of 48, um, to me, uh, for the business, given COVID is going on, I don't see that as a huge germane question for them. What does that mean for the committee? And does that assist us with potential costs or, um, investigation or any, anything? Is there an advantage to what you just said?
Uh, it would just bring it out to the, to the, uh, renewal date of July 1st. Uh, I, I don't think it would, would change anything as far as them having to apply for it. Um, and I don't think it would change anything as far as the chief doing his investigation.
So it's just a matter of time, uh, regarding the severity of, of the charges?
It would just be a matter of time.
Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Otherwise, all in favor of the 48-day suspension, say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No. No. No.
Can you do a roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call.
Borstman?
No.
Caravelo?
Muted.
Caravelo?
No.
You?
Can you hear me?
No.
Eileen?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Benson?
No.
Lagaki?
Aye.
Bayaski?
Give me a second. Aye.
Reeves? Reeves?
Muted Lisa.
Oh, yeah, Lisa, you're muted.
Is there a way to unmute everybody? Tom, Tim?
Um, I'm not sure if she muted herself. Lisa, you're muted.
Sorry, no.
Okay.
Stumacher?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of six to five.
Okay. So then the next item of business is, uh, Resolution 49, which is, uh, action to approve the appointment of Chata Hoffman, Chata Huffman to be the agent. Yes.
Want to order, Tim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you, that was for the amendment. We need to make a vote on the final motion as amended.
Okay, well, yeah, basically going to be the same thing, but yeah. Okay, well, yeah, basically gonna be the same thing, but yeah.
Yep.
So. It would be the original motion as amended, so it would just basically say instead of revocation. Um, we'd be looking at suspending for the forty-eight days up to June eighth. So we'll do a roll call on that one again.
So, uh, Tim? Have that motion read again, would you?
So now we're.
Do you have it?
We're back to the original motion as amended, so we are. Basically voting on the same thing that you, am I correct, that we're voting on the suspension instead of the revocation? Because it's been amended?
That's how I would understand it.
Correct.
Would you like a roll call?
Please.
Yes.
Caravelo?
Hi.
Doom?
No.
Eileen?
Hi.
Hirsch?
Hi.
Johnson?
No.
Lagaki?
Aye.
Bayeski?
Aye.
Reeves?
No.
Stumacher?
Hi.
Bartlett?
Hi, Holly.
Is that an I?
Hi, yes.
Borsma?
No.
Uh, that motion carries on a vote of seven to four.
Okay. So is that all we have to do, uh, Attorney, uh, Ryder?
Yes, I, I think. Just to be clear, I think what the original motion was, was to adopt the, uh, committee's report. And the amendment effectively changed the recommendation or the result of the recommendation to a different. Uh, a, a different decision, but the council has, I think, effectively adopted the report, the findings and the conclusions. Um, but it decided to impose a suspension rather than a revocation.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you, uh, all the attorneys and people that were, uh, involved with that conversation. The next item is related to Shakers currently. Um, my understanding is we don't have an agent there. So the next item is, um. Possible action to appoint Chatta Huffman as an agent for Shakers. Located at one eleven Shelley Drive. Anybody interested in making that motion?
Um, actually, I, because we don't have the, um, chief's report. On this new agent, I would like to table it till next meeting, seeing as how we now have time. Or send it to the Public Safety Committee.
I would agree with that one hundred percent.
I'm not so sure if we can do that. Attorney Dragney, um, didn't you give us some? Advice on that the last time, or is this different?
Well, we have nothing on the, the chief has not given any report unlike the last time. And I feel like we're not making a due diligence, uh, decision.
What is the signed document in the packet from the chief of the approval of agent? Isn't that when he does the check?
Yes.
So it is in the packet.
That's, it was in the packet. I read it.
I didn't read the chief's part.
He signed it and put the report in there.
I'm looking at it right now that he, he did approve on three twenty-seven.
Okay, then I missed it.
I have a question.
Nope, I don't have it on mine.
Lisa, you had a question? Go ahead.
I, I did. And correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I'm thinking that the agent. Lives about fifty plus minutes away. I'm curious about that and just wondering about the level of involvement and, and. Why a choice of somebody who's not more local, maybe just a little bit of insight would be helpful.
Uh, well, this is Attorney Watt. Again, I don't, um, I, I don't know. I can, I mean, I know Ms. Huffman or was. I don't know if she's still. On the call or not. I don't see her on the roll here, but.
I'm still here.
Oh, there, she's still here. I, I can certainly let her and, um, Jer Meyer, um. Speak to that concern if they would like, or if the council would allow.
Please.
Okay, do you care if I have a decision settled?
Go ahead, Chatta.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I don't know if everybody can hear me or not. Um, I work in medicine. Um, I'm told all the time, I'm looking for residents here. Uh, currently, obviously with the COVID thing going on right now, I'm not actually looking for a new place at like. Right now, uh, obviously the shelter in place, but, um. Stoughton, basically anytime needed and anything involved with the liquor sales obviously would be. Run through me to ensure everything's in compliance with the law. Um. So it was just, um, the, uh, the residence an hour away is basically a temporary residence until. Um. This, um, I guess self shelter in place, um, comes to pass. Does anybody have any questions?
That answer your question, Lisa?
Uh, yes, thanks.
And so we'd be looking for a motion to, uh. Approve Ms. Huffman as the agent. Is somebody willing to make that motion?
I will move, make the motion to approve. I'll second that.
Second? Is that Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, this is Jean. I have a question for the chief. Chief Leck, I, I, um. I also did some due diligence and, and trying to understand, um, how they're choosing their agents and. I did not find anything that concerned me. I wouldn't mind asking if I'm allowed to. Um, why Ms. Huffman is interested in taking this on at this time. Um, and, um. But Chief, I, I just wanted to know if you could comment on any of your background, um. Information. I only was concerned about a local ordinance issue of speeding. And just given the history, Chief, are you able to comment?
Well, the only thing I could comment to is, do you find any municipal or state criminal records? That would disqualify her as being an agent for the, uh, from the.
Chief, you broke up for me. I could hear you well.
I says, I did not find any municipal or state criminal charge convictions that would. Uh, warrant me to recommend denial of the person as an agent for the establishment.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Huffman, can you speak to, uh, your interest in wanting to take this over? Um, given all that's been happening in a, in history here, I'm wondering what motivates you to take on this responsibility?
Um, since, uh. I've known Mr. Myers, um, and Shakers, I got to basically see it, you know, from the beginning on the outside. You know, coming from the ground up as a new business and been in there and I believe they have some great ideas for the place and, uh. Obviously, the situation isn't ideal, but, um, for, you know, anybody involved. But I do want them to succeed and I do believe they, they want to be a positive influence on the committee, so, um. I have the time and I am willing to accept, uh, responsibility for it. Um, but I believe it's gonna be a positive thing for. For the people of Stoughton and I know Mr. Meyer and I know he's going to do the best he can to make it. Make it work out well for everybody, so that's why I'm willing to take responsibility for it.
Have you ever acted as an agent of, of a license before?
Um, as a liquor license holder, I have not.
Are there any other questions? Otherwise, there's a motion on the table? And. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right.
All right.
Item number seven is the, uh, declaration of emergency in Stoughton. And this was something that we did, oh, it's over a month ago already. Um. Basically, what we did is we put together, uh, proclamation here that gave me some. Some authority to do what we needed to do until we could get together and have the city council authorize it. So we were able to do some things as far as, uh. Take care of some employee issues that needed to be done. Um, but you'll hear a little bit about afterward what some of those specific actions were. And then also it, it made us eligible for a potential reimbursement with some funds that may be available. Um, for the COVID nineteen emergency. So what we're looking for tonight is just basically confirming the declaration that I already did. Um. Attorney Dragney, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think it would be a motion to ratify, uh, or to modify, uh, up to the council. Either to ratify the declaration or the proclamation or to, or to modify it in some way.
I'd move to ratify.
Second?
Motion by Reeves and it's second by Johnson. Other, is there any discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Um, next item is. Approved city Stoughton employees, volunteers and vendors that are deemed essential during the COVID nineteen. Pan, uh, pan epidemic. Um, this is one of the documents that we put together. Um. Attorney Dragney or, uh. AJ and HR, walk us through this if you have any questions. It's. Basically what we did is we have had several department head meetings. Where we discuss roles and responsibilities and the people that we felt we were absolutely going to need as we go through this. Crisis and, and just kind of identify who they are and then we set up some accounts, so if. If we need to do some tracking, we can do that and, and that information will be, already be in there. AJ, are you with us? Did you want to go through this at all, or has that covered?
Um, no, I just wanted to make sure they understand that these are staff that may be required to work during the safer at home. Um, when we get further into tonight's discussion, you're gonna see that at this time, we do have eighty-eight out of a hundred and thirteen employees. Working at a hundred percent and some of those are working remotely and some are in the field. So this just gives us the right to allow those employees under that safer at home order to be able to work.
Uh, Tim, I would. Tim?
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
I would move, uh, approval of resolution fifty-two twenty twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Okay, the next.
I, I, I believe I made a mistake there, Tim. I, I said resolution fifty-two, I meant fifty-one, so just clarify.
I think you meant fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah, it was fifty.
Was it? Sorry, fifty.
I thought I heard fifty.
Okay, I said fifty.
Now we're. Close enough. Now we're on, uh, fifty-one, which is authorizing the department heads to make the changes, uh. Necessary for emergency policies of during the duration of the COVID nineteen. Did you want to cover this one as well, AJ?
Yeah, I do. Um, we are taking to several of the committees such as the Public Works Committee and the Utilities Committee. The updates that we've had to implement in those departments to allow those employees to work safely. In those departments, especially the Utilities Department, we have, uh, services that need to continue throughout the safer at home order. And what we've done within those policies is that director has put together a step by step. Of how employees are to enter the building, where we strategically have vehicles parked throughout the city. So that we do not, um, allow employees to be exposed. In many of these positions, we do not have redundancy. Therefore, we've had to put emergency practices in place to keep the employees safe from cross-contamination. As well as, um, contamination within going in the same building. So we have all types of coordination. That we have what we call a swab in or disinfect in and disinfect out. So that's what these emergency policies are. They're to, uh, ensure the safety of those employees, but also. What we're looking for here is that you give those department heads that authorization to be able to write those policies on an as needed basis. I am reviewing all of them from the, the legal side to make sure that we're not putting policies in place that. Violate somebody's rights and, uh, we're just trying to make sure that we're keeping everything moving forward. Yet keeping all of our employees safe. And that's what this is for.
How many? Approve? Second?
Motion by Alder. The second was by Reeves?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
Well, I just want to really commend all the leadership and AJ and Attorney Dragney for all the work they've been. Doing at a breakneck speed. It's been very impressive and. And daunting, I'm sure for them because they're, it's uncharted territory, so I just really want to commend everybody. This is. I've been quite impressed by your professionalism and your commitment to the city. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries. It's much more fun to do a, a vote than it is to do a silent vote, I decided.
Uh, just getting quite a bit of background noise from you, I think.
From who?
From Sid.
Okay, uh, next item is, um. This one here is coming from, uh. The Police Department and, and HR worked on this one together. Who wants, AJ or Chief Leck?
I'll cover it. I'll cover it.
Okay.
So this here is a memo of understanding that we drew up based on what Chief Leck identified to be what we needed for coverage. So what he put in place was twelve. Hour shifts with seven days on and seven days off. I sent out today an email to all of you where it's highlighted saying Jamin is working on. We actually came up with a number and it's eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy cents. That'll cost us to be able to run this shift until June first. What's happening with the tw- with the, uh, twelve hour shifts is there is nine hours of overtime that's created per week. And, uh, that totals out based on the number of officers, which is twenty-one. That comes to a grand total of eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's going to, um, be out of budget. So we're looking for approval on that and Greg, if you could talk a little bit why, as to why we need this type of shift coverage.
Oh, first it's, uh, nine hours per pay period, not per week. Um, so that's based on our, uh, city pay periods. Um, we did this in an effort to make sure that we could separate our workforce. So we have, uh, four, uh, groups, uh, designed to make sure that there's not, uh, in, uh, any contamination. Inside the groups where they get. uh, sent on a, a, a call that there was an exposure. We were fearful that we would lose a large percentage of our department at one time just because because of one incident. So having them split into four distinct groups. Uh, they work six AM to six PM. Um, and then there's a, a group which covers that twenty-four hour period for twelve, for seven days. And then there there's a B group that works the next seven days for the twenty-four hour period. Um, that was by design so that we could limit exposure between the, um, the staff members. We're especially concerned about, um, death investigation or anything like that where we would, uh, have a high risk of exposure.
Chief, does that include support staff in there as well?
No, right now we're doing that with sworn staff and, um, uh, only covers the sworn staff and, uh, the, the MOU basically is just an agreement with the, um, the, uh, the labor agreement that says that, you know, allows us to to implement these shifts with the understanding that we'll go back to what the, um, labor agreement says for design shifts later. Um, also, just to put a little caveat on this, there should be money left over because we went three months without having a police officer position filled. And we'll likely be, uh, at a three-month level on not having our office manager position filled um, during that time. And we hope to also, uh, the schedule has afforded us to reduce over, regular overtime as far as shift work goes. Um, so we're not having to, uh, cover those shifts with overtime. So it should pretty much be about a wash at the end of the year, but, uh, no guarantee in that, uh, at this time, but it's looking like it's having that effect. Uh, we really have prohibited anybody from taking vacation time during this, uh, time period, um, uh, because of, uh, concerns about having, uh, the enough staff available.
I guess my, my major concern on it would be if you have some support staff in there that would bridge in between these uh, twelve-hour shifts that you'd have a potential avenue for contamin- cross-contamination.
Yeah, we, we do have a slight risk there, but with the dispatchers, I mean, they're, they're able to maintain a safe distance um, from the patrol officers as they're coming in and out of the building. Uh, it's one thing that they're very conscious of and we've implemented a tremendous amount of, uh, decontamination and cleaning procedures uh, that's keeping the entire building equipment, squad cars and everything else, uh, as decontaminated as possible. Um, I just didn't see that there was as much um, potential for personal interaction with the dispatchers as there is for officers on the um, the street that may be involved in, you know, an arrest where they have to come in contact with each other and with the, the suspect.
I think the other thing to mention, Chief, is that you guys are, I was there today and they are religiously taking temperatures throughout their shifts to make sure that nobody's showing signs or symptoms. Which is above and beyond what any other department's doing.
Yeah, thanks for pointing it out, uh, AJ.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Got it. Thanks for addressing.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion on this one.
I moved.
Second.
I think I heard Reeves and Schumacher's at back there.
Sure.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Next one is
Emergency responders.
Yeah. I just noticed it says it says R fifty-two on it, but this is actually R fifty-three.
Yep, it does.
So we'll clean that up. Um, yeah, if you want to run through this one as well, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So this is to identify those individuals within the city that are true emergency responders. And what that is, is individuals that no matter what, need to be able to respond. So the departments that we have identified are obviously our police officers, the lieutenants, the sergeants, the detectives, dispatch, and then our community service officer. In the fire department, it's our regular employees, which is the chief, the deputy chief, and the fire technician. EMS, it's the director and the EMS operations specialist. Utilities, it's all staff. So everyone down there, all twenty-three employees. And then Public Works, they are in there, um, with the exception of their administrative assistant. So what this means is they are not afforded the right under the, um, Families First Coronavirus Response Act. These employees are ineligible for emergency sick leave under the act and temporarily the Expanded Family Medical Leave Act. So what that means is they need daycare. Unfortunately, we need them at the city. Therefore, they fall into that category of emergency responder and, uh, their emergency responder position takes precedence.
Um, this is Matt. Let me just weigh in a little bit there, uh, just to clarify a couple of things. So the Families First, uh, Coronavirus Response Act, the CARES Act gives the city the discretion to designate emergency responders and to decide whether those was, emergency responders will be eligible for the emergency paid sick leave under the act. Um, and, or the, um, extended family and medical leave. I believe I, as AJ, my recollection is that the choice that we've made in the city is that our emergency responders will be eligible for the emergency uh, paid sick leave, but not for the ex, uh, temporary extended family leave, which is eligible, which is only, uh, available for caring for, uh, your minor children. Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that is correct. So if they become ill, they are covered. If they need daycare, that's not covered.
Right.
Any questions on that one? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second, was that Phil?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, that carries. Um, and then here's the next one. This is a long one here. You want to go through this one as well, AJ?
Yeah, I will. Um, following the decor- declaration of the state of emergency and safer at home order, leadership recommended to the mayor that all full-time and regular part-time staff be compensated through April thirtieth, twenty twenty at their regular wage and scheduled hours regardless of work being available. It was reported during the leadership meeting that the budget would not be adversely affected as wages and salaries are already allocated and approved for the twenty twenty budget. This is where I'd like to give you some more information. And based on the information that came in from all of leadership, I put a little, um, spreadsheet together today and we have a total of a hundred and thirteen um, regular full-time and part-time employees. Out of that, we have eighty-eight employees that are working at a hundred percent either remotely or in the field. The total number of employees with reduced hours, I'm going to start with the library. The library has a total of twelve employees that are working a reduced schedule. Of that, we have six employees, I'm sorry, one employee that's six hours short, four that are twelve hours short, one that's thirteen hours short, two that are fourteen, one that's fifteen, and three that are twenty. But under the library's epidemic and health emergency policy, it states that those employees have to be paid at one hundred percent. That is not a council decision. That is a library board decision and they run independently. So those employees, no matter what, are paid at a hundred percent as long as that um, epidemic and health emergency policy is in place. So again, that was twelve employees. Within the city regular, we have thirteen employees that are working reduced schedules. Those employees, we have three that are working zero to five hours short, two that are five to ten, three that are eight hours short. This is per pay period. One that's, I'm sorry, per week. One that's ten hours short, one that's thirteen, and three that are twenty. The three that have fallen the twenty category, depending upon how long the, um, safer at home order is in place, those employees may need to be called back. So, um, right now they're working short. We're trying to keep them safer at home, but if this continues much longer, they may need to come back to work in some type of capacity. For example, one being our, um, Martin, who is the person who takes care of our facilities. He's trying to stay at home as much as possible, but if this continues long-term, we have things that are going to need to get done. So that is the total of employees that are affected by this. So what we're asking for here is that you approve the paying the employees through April thirtieth at one hundred percent.
Move to approve?
Second.
And who is the second?
Gaki.
Okay. Any discussion on that one?
I guess I just have a question.
Go ahead.
One question, uh, AJ, have you thought about, um, it doesn't look like we're done with this, um, safer at home for a while. What happens after April thirtieth? I know it's just seems how you're here.
Yep, good question. Um, that's the reason I had the leadership department put together their numbers and send those to me. Um, I just got those as of yesterday, so I quickly put this report together. I'll be working with the finance department to show you what the cost is, but again, these are budgeted dollars. Um, and we're talking a small number of employees. So if you're asking me what my recommendation is, it would be to continue to pay those employees. But we do have other things. I don't know if you caught the news tonight. Um, they did pass some changes today in regards to the unemployment. So they waived the one week today that employees that need to file for unemployment would start getting that immediately, and that would be an option for us. Um, but what we'll do over the next couple of days is pull together the numbers if that's something that you want to see as to what the cost is to afford those employees that will need to be working or not be at home without working, um, to continue to pay them. And there's a goodwill gesture that goes with that. But also it's cost. So you'll need to, to think about that and balance that because we'll be coming forward with another recommendation. Um, those children, those that are taking care of children that have to be at home, um, there are some options in regards to, we are tracking their hours, but they're still being paid a hundred percent. Uh, there may be a way for them to be paid for that as well through another source through the state. But, um, there's hoops that people have to jump through and that's something that we need to weigh out and see for thirteen people if that really makes sense.
Nope, I appreciate you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to follow up, Regina, we, uh, we talked about this last Wednesday at our leadership meeting and everybody was given kind of the homework assignment. And it sounds like AJ's already been receiving that information. And our next leadership meeting is tomorrow. So, um, I want to thank staff for, for, you know, getting that done a day early. And many of the people that are affected by this have been volunteering, um, for the elections and, you know, the Meals on Wheels and those types of things. And, and so certainly, um, if they haven't been working full hours, they've contributed in other ways, which has been very helpful.
No, I was never suggesting that. I just want to make sure that we keep our employees as long as we physically can through this and I just want to make sure that we're on top of things and to make sure that we have our, our next resolution ready for our next meeting. That's all I was kind of implying.
And that's been the plan. And I know AJ and myself have been in communication with other municipalities, what the trends are. So hopefully we'll go ahead.
I do have some of that information real quick. I did get ahold of DeForest and they are indefinitely paying their employees at a hundred percent. And the same with Wanakee. So I'm just trying to call around. It's difficult to get people to call you back right now because they're all busy doing the same things we are. But, um, DeForest has theirs indefinitely and, uh, Wanakee does as well.
So, you know, the real challenge is, is is, you know, we, we do have our budget done, but we don't know what's going to happen as far as some of the revenues we get from the federal and state and from the county. Um, you know, but at this point, we have to make decisions based on what we do know and our employees are, are important to us. So we're going to do what we can to take care of them.
Is there any feeling from the, is it appropriate to ask Tim if there's any feeling from the council in regards to what they would like to see? Or do you want me to send an email out and ask that?
It's up to the council members. They can answer now or they can answer privately, uh, you know, I, you know, we've kind of laid out our position here at least till the end of the month and certainly, um, some feedback is always helpful.
I think the right thing is to continue.
Alright, I heard Ben first. Ben was first and then I think it was Lisa.
I, I think the right thing is to
It was Jean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I think the right thing is to continue this, um, especially, you know, this is budgeted money. Um, and we're, you know, if everyone's still on staff as, as as far as we've gone, um, and providing whatever services they can. And, uh, it's the right thing to do.
Go ahead, Jean.
Mine is a little simple. I, I think that as long as that there's a safer at home order, I would hope that we would try to match that date, um, without too much financial risk.
I'll agree with that as well because I think our, your emergency declaration, Mayor, I think runs through the middle of May as it's stated anyway.
Right. I, I agree with that too. I don't like the indefinite thing because we don't know how this is going to shake out and we might have to be creative how we go forward. And so indefinite means that we're locked into something. I mean, as much as we want to keep our employees in what they do, we don't know what the future holds. And so I think we have to be a little bit proceed a little bit cautiously until we understand how things are unfolding. But until then, I want to keep people as long as we can.
Okay.
Health and safety first. No.
May may I ask a question back?
Sure.
AJ, are there any, uh, families that are experiencing hardship because of childcare duties or do things appear to be fairly congruent?
Things appear to be pretty good. I haven't had any complaints or anybody talking differently. It seems like between the spouses, they've been able to take turns. I've been checking in with the department heads. Uh, we have our leadership meetings as well. But it seems like they're able to balance what they're trying to accomplish. Otherwise, they are working the reduced hours.
And I apologize, I said childcare. I want to open that comment of mine up to the other spectrum. There are some folks who are taking care of elders who have been taken out of nursing homes and assisted living. And I would ask that if people are in that situation, that they be afforded the same as childcare.
That is in the, um, order or in the document as well under the act, Jean, that you can take care of a family member.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I guess my question is, do we change the, um, resolution that we have and extend it for a certain period or do we go with it as is? Or are you not going with it?
I think there's a motion to approve it as written.
Yeah.
There is.
Okay.
I'd be, I'd be willing to entertain if we, if we all think it's wise amendment that says for, uh, as long as there's a safer at home order. Uh, we may want to think about a condition rather than a date.
Uh, this is Matt. Can, can I make a, ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so if the, if the date is left as April thirty, my assumption is that at the next, before the end of April, we'll have to, we'll have to have the council re- before the end of April, we'll have to, we'll have to have the council revisit this question and decide whether to extend the date beyond April 30th, or whether to maybe change the, the game plan beginning on May 1st or something. So that would be one possibility, to approve it through April 30th, knowing that before the end of April, you're going to have to look at this again. Another option that I heard described would be to change the, the language to say that this plan will be approved until the safer, as long as the safer at home order is in effect. If that's going to be considered, I would suggest saying, I would modify that somewhat to say until, as long as the safer at home order is in effect, or unless, or until modified by the council. I'd want to always reserve the right for the council to change it.
Wisely stated.
Yes.
Okay, so is that an amendment?
Yes, I will make that amendment that, that as Attorney Dregney just noted.
Is there a second?
Second, Matt.
All right, any more discussion on that? Is everybody clear on that?
I'm not. Yeah, I want to make, my understanding is that now the motion is to amend the resolution to extend the, instead of saying April 30, instead of saying through April 30, would say until safer at home order is terminated or until this is otherwise modified by the council, as outlined in the March 19 memo.
That's how I understood it. Did you catch that, Holly?
I think so.
Holly, I took it, I wrote it down so we can talk in the morning.
Well, let me just, just a second here. So it was a motion to amend it until the safer at home order is lifted or otherwise amended by the council. As outlined in the March 19 to 2020 memo.
I could improve the drafting a little bit, but it's my fault. I would, let me try one more time. So it would say be resolved by the common council of the city of Stoughton that the interim compensation plan, as outlined in the March 19, 2020 memo, be ratified through the expiration of the safer at home order or until modified by this common council. Period.
Again, I so moved.
Okay. Any questions on that from anyone? All right, so we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So that we go back to the original resolution as amended. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
Thank you all. That really, I, I think our employees will be very pleased to hear that. Well, thank you. I've actually been getting calls asking what's happening after the 30th. So that peace of mind is very helpful.
That's what we're here for. Want to give peace of mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next couple items here are coming from planning and utilities. And I'm going to try to hand this over to Rodney, but I'm not sure which device to hand it over to. That one doesn't look like, that's the right one?
I think we're trying to hand it over to this one. I can, Mayor, I can at least start by speaking to it.
Or I can show it, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, really, it's just a resolution that outlines the, the bids that were received and the recommendation to proceed with awarding the bid to the low bidder Prezi Construction for the 2020 Street and Utility Construction Contract 1. This motion, this resolution identifies the amount that would be funded through the city, the street and stormwater budgets. And it also outlines the amount that Stoughton Utilities would, would fund as part of their aspect of the project. There were five bids that were received for this project. The low bid was consistent with the engineer's estimate. And we are recommending proceeding with the project in light of the bids that we received without accepting the bid alternative. The bid alternative is related to a strictly sanitary sewer aspect of the project that was bid specifically. So it could be harvested out of this project if it came in too, too much. Director Weiss will be able to speak to that momentarily. But for at this point, we're recommending proceeding with the low bid from Prezi Construction for this aspect of work. Subsequent to this, you have a motion or your next agenda item, there is some budget amendments related to this contract that would have to be put in place in order to make it, make it be funded, fully funded on the city portion. And that can be discussed in the next item as well.
So I'll present the motion, R 55 2020, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into the agreement with Prezi Construction for the 2020 Street and Utility Reconstruction Contract 1-2020. So moved.
Second.
Okay, second by Aldo Person Hirsch. Is there anything you wanted to add, Brett? Otherwise, it looks like Jill's, she's ready to speak to it.
Yeah, I was just going to hand it to both Rodney and Jill to, to cut down on our cross chatter in here, but.
Go ahead, Jill.
Okay, thank you. Just to kind of explain the bid alternate, when we actually reviewed all of the bids that came in, no matter how we looked at it, the base bid awarding that was in the best interest of the city as well as the utility. There was no bid that came forward that we felt was, would be in the best interest of both parties to move that forward. The bid alternate actually is the storms or the sanitary sewer, excuse me, that lies in the side lots between Taft and McKinley. And that's a sanitary sewer section that actually presently flows to the south, and then actually there's a Fermo sewer that then flows along the river. This would then be rerouted and would redirect it into the park and then to an interceptor sewer. This part of the project doesn't have to be done immediately. The one piece of this project though, that are the bid alternates particularly important is that it does, completing that piece of the project does then reorient how all the sewer flows, and it would be then pulled off the river. Previously, we had went through and had done a budget adjustment to actually put sanitary sewer in prospect with the goal of eliminating the sanitary sewer that right now flows next to the Yhara River. Ultimately, this bid alternate section needs to be done for that project to be fully completed and for that sewer to be then abandoned along the river and for it to float into that interceptor sewer. But based on the bids that we received, it's in our best interest to move forward right now with that base bid. I guess I should highlight that later in the agenda, there is a motion basically to rebid the alternate bid piece for this year. I can get into that more probably then, but I do recommend that we look to rebid that section of the project and complete that yet this year if that's possible.
Are there any questions or comments from council members on the motion?
Yeah, Tim said here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have had some questions from constituents about whether the timing on this is good, given the, the virus situation. Two points, one is what happens with people who may not be able to afford being able to do this because they are out of work or whatever. And the second part of it is, is the fact that people should, we, we need to be careful that people are taking precautions, especially with this kind of, this kind of work on, from this, you know, with, that's going to be happening in the city. So I guess the issue, and I'm not going to present a motion or whatever, but it's just to raise the issue some folks in the city are not, are very concerned about the timing of whether we have to go forward at this point or if it should be delayed.
This is Rodney. We've, we've actually reached out to the, the Prezi Construction people and requested their COVID-19 plan, and they prepared their plan or supplied us with their plan. So they are putting in place the procedures that they feel are appropriate for their crews and obviously for the public that would be around the, the project. Most notably, generally, the public is not working or not in close proximity of the construction crews when they're out there, so hopefully that would still be the case. But there is, there is recognition of the COVID-19 issues, and we have, have sought to get their, their COVID plan, and we'll discuss that as part of the construction project pre-construction meeting.
And then Rodney, what about the issue of, is this a good time to do it? Are we going to be, is it, simply is it, is it a, is it an appropriate time for doing it, especially with the costs that's going to be incurred by at least some people on this whole project?
Yeah, I, I can speak more globally to the fact that we received five competitive bids on this, so there, then the low bid was very consistent with the engineer's estimate, so there at least is an appetite for contractors to complete the work. The issue of financial hardship or the ability for people to pay may not diminish if this project is delayed another year. There are mechanisms to pay special assessments over a period of time. There's also a financial hardship provision within the city ordinances that may come into play for certain circumstances that would be explored through the finance office if that, if that became an issue.
And Rodney, could you just, this is a follow up, could you just tell us again what the, what the circumstances are for special assessments and how, how long it takes for them to, or how that long they have to pay it through special, special assessments?
So the special assessments are, are soon to be distributed to all the property owners. A public hearing will be set up so that they could come and speak to the council or, or speak remotely to the council related to the hearing aspect of that. That will outline the cost allocations through special assessments for their portion of curb gutter, sidewalk, driveway aprons. And that would, if it's over $1,500, if their portion is over $1,500, I believe that can be paid in equal installments over a 10-year period. At the city's interest, a little more than the city's borrowing rate. But that will be outlined as part of the package that will go out to property owners and be held as part of the public hearing for the special assessments likely to occur the last meeting in May.
And just one more thing, and that is that the constituents are not only going to have to pay for special assessments, but also especially with the sewer rerouting that have to be done on their personal, on their real estate property, that that, that is going to be substantial for a number of people in the area. I'm, I'm thinking somewhere, some, some people are probably going to have to pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $6,000, some $20,000 for the work that has to be done, so I, I think we just have to be really careful about that. It's not just assessments, but also the necessity of them having to reroute their, their sewer systems in their house or outside or whatever, so it's a, it's a concern that I have for people to be able to afford it. I talked to Mayor Swadley about, we, we really don't want to be in a situation of bankrupting people with this whole project.
So I'm going to have Jill reply that a little bit. I think we are all sensitive, especially now, Sid, so I think it's appropriate comments. I think one of the purposes for the alternate bid is, is to try to minimize the expense, and I'll let, you know, kind of take the conversation from here.
Thank you. And absolutely, we're very concerned, I think, of the impacts to any of our customers, any of our taxpayers, our taxpayers within the community. With that, with the sewer provision that we passed actually last meeting, everyone will basically be given a five-year window to complete their connection to the new sanitary sewer. So they wouldn't have to do that immediately unless we get into a situation where there's an environmental issue that would cause us to, to move that timeframe. We'll monitor that, but everybody will have that five-year window, so they won't have to, to actually connect immediately to move their sewer and to have that additional expense.
That's helpful.
I'm going to step in here as well. Really, the, how Jill's presented this in the past is we, with the, the sewer redirection, we do this now while the sewer is old, or we wait until the sewer is broken for an indeterminate amount of time. And we have a poopy river for an indeterminate amount of time. And then we have to do it anyway, so that's, that's kind of the decision we're faced with here.
Thank you, Ben. I think you couldn't have said it better, at least better than I did. Thank you.
Doesn't sound like something you'd say, Jill.
I really like the poopy river, though, you know.
Yeah, it's a nice.
Are you object, you're objecting to the river or the poopy?
Must be getting laid. Anybody else?
Approve the resolution.
Okay. So we have a motion. There was a second. Yeah, we had a motion, but she created a second by Hirsch.
Okay.
All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one carries. And then the next one is, is the CIP in relationship to this street construction. Rodney, are you going through this one as well?
Certainly can. This, this itemizes the adjustments to the budget and how we propose to fund the adjustments to the budget. We're proposing to reallocate $50,000 from the engineering technician position that hasn't been filled yet to offset part of the street construction project. And also reallocate $55,000 from the sidewalk replacement fund to offset some of this project cost. It, it's noteworthy that during the CIP process last fall, you recall sidewalks were removed from the project. During the budgeting process, or during the project development process, sidewalks were added back into the scope of this work, so that's part of the reason for the shortfall. These budget amendments that are outlined in this resolution also take into account a small construction contingency in the case quantities creep a little bit on this project in order to have it completed within budget, so the proposed resolution outlines how we, we're proposing that be accomplished.
And this one went through the Finance Committee earlier, Aldo Person Schumacher.
All right, R 56 2020, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the 2020, 2024 City of Stoughton Capital Improvements Plan, CIP budget in relation to the Street and Utility Construction Contract 1-2020. So moved.
Second.
The Aldo Person Reeves, did I get you right this time?
Correct, yes.
All right, any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little concerned that we're taking money away from the engineering technician. I know now is not the time to probably really hire anybody, or maybe it is. I mean, we really pushed for this, Rodney. We really wanted to get some help for you, and I'm really sad that now that money's going to something else.
Well, I, I appreciate the, the comments. We certainly were hoping to have that position on board already as well. We have not, and it's likely that person or that position will not be filled the first half of this year, so that's why there's really $50,000 available to help fund this part of the construction project.
Okay, so it's only for like the first six months, you're not giving it away for the. Six months. You're not giving it away for the whole year.
That's correct.
Okay, oh, that that makes me feel better. I was concerned for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, as part of the whole COVID nineteen thing, we really Stop bringing new positions on board, you know, because You know, we don't know what people potentially had been exposed to in previous positions. So hopefully, you know, we'll get to a position where we can start hiring again. We do have A position at the PD as well that we like to fill in the office. So um We have some applications and when the time's right, we'll be moving forward on some of these uh hirings.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Thank you for mentioning it. Um All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries. By the end of the night, we're all gonna say it at the same time without the delay. Item fifteen uh went through the Finance Committee as well. The person Schumacher.
All right, we didn't. I I don't see any official resolution title for it. Um unless you guys, is there? I don't think there is one. Um so this was in relation to uh Aldi and their tax assessment. Um they included some property or some part of their property within their assessment And didn't file uh an amended tax return to it. Um so they overpaid on their taxes and then this would uh just be What we would kick back to them. Does that summarize that? I I don't know if this is um Because this isn't a resolution, how do we handle this? Is this just a notice?
This was actually passed at the March tenth Finance Meeting. The motion was to recommend a council to approve payment of the unlawful tax.
I see. Uh then I will present the motion to pay the unlawful tax to uh Ryan Tax on behalf of Aldi Inc. in the amount of fifteen hundred forty three dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves, okay? Any discussion? Here none. Oh, go ahead.
Uh does this have to do with the uh dark store exemption?
No.
No.
I think this is personal property, isn't it?
Yeah, it's machinery.
It was some machinery and equipment, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they changed the law and they've been trying to change it the last few years and Sometimes the businesses either don't realize that they have equipment that's eligible Or maybe they purchased something and I think they're just trying to to get what they believe is theirs. So but yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with the building.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Um all in favor of the motion, say aye. One, two, three?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was pretty good. It passes. All right, next item, I believe, is coming from We have a few coming from Park and Rec. Are you ready, Regina?
Sure. Um Resolution R fifty seven twenty twenty authorizing the submittal of a Wisconsin DNR Stewardship Local Units of Government Federal Lands and Water Conservation Fund and Recreation Trails Grant Programs. Application by the Park and Rec for the Ohio River Front Development. Um and I so move. Second.
There's a motion and a second, and it looks like Dan um like transferred it over, so he's gonna present. The second was by Reeves, was it?
Correct, yeah, I think so.
Okay, uh anything that you want to add? Anything you want to add, Regina?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, Dan is doing a great job of finding all these Grants within the state and federal government that we can apply for to Reduce the fiscal impact on, you know, our Project both for, you know, the the trails along the riverfront and the whitewater park. And this is just Another part of it that would have help fund the pedestrian bridge. We already got some funding for the pedestrian bridge Bridge, but this would be another match to it to reduce the further reduce the cost of the city. So It's really cool and I hope we get it and it's and I hope you support it because again, it's another hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars that the city doesn't have to come up with.
Anything you want to add, Dan?
Sure. So yeah, the grant, this grant would be coming for um It's the same application that we applied for last year where we received a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars for Uh the trail and some bank restoration work uh in the RDA property. So the this amount would be the remainder of the cost estimate for the pedestrian bridge. Um and if we receive the grant, um it would uh basically make the pedestrian bridge uh all grant funded. Um so there's three, there's three uh funds that the DNR can pull out of for this program and uh The two that we'd be asking for money out of would be the Land Water Conservation Fund and recreational trail program. And uh those are both federal dollars that the DNR um is the grant administrator administrator for. So the um it's Likely that we will get this grant because the grant application hasn't changed much from last year where it's uh we were successful in giving the money.
Dan, we lost you.
All right. Do anybody have any questions while Dan's rebooting?
So I have a question. So this does not apply to the whitewater park?
Well, it's the pedestrian bridge that goes from the RDA site to the Manton Park. I think the quote, if Rodney, if you're there, if Dan's not there, it was like to to do that bridge was like over It was close to like uh it was a couple hundred thousand dollars up to Can't remember somehow. I think it's like four hundred thousand dollars to engineer it And to get it, you know, a nice bridge going across. So With the different grants that Dan has applied for, and I think some of the money from the RDA grant It would be a wash. And so this is fantastic if we get this.
Right. So yeah, this is part of the overall project, but no, it's not to do anything in the water. It's just a pedestrian bridge crossing over from The RDA site to Manton Park.
Which would be part of what we want to have happen, whether we have the whitewater park or not. Is that correct?
Yes. Yep, because it's it's connecting our new development at the RDA site to You know, what we're redoing at the Manton Park. And I think it's a great connection and it's, you know, I'll be Sighted right down Sixth Street. So looking down from the Rotary Park all the way down, you'll have a I think a good pathway all the way to Manton Park. So it'd be really cool.
The reason why I raise it is that we still have not decided on the whitewater park. I wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Right, this isn't really, you know, this is more about, you know, making the RDA site really desirable and uh Connecting it to the Manton Park. You know, I think that'd be a great way to start off, you know, start Revamping the Manton Park Aspect as well.
All right, any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries. Item seventeen is coming from Park and Rec. Uh go ahead, Regina.
Uh this is a resolution fifty eight twenty twenty authorizing the participation In the Department of Natural Resources Municipal Dam Grant Program. And I so move. Second. So this and Dan can, we've already really passed a similar orders to this. And when we submitted our uh dam grant To the DNR, they just didn't like one part of this resolution, so we just had to rewrite it. So You guys basically already passed it. We just took out the financial impact to the city Because that's what the DNR wanted us to do. And so We're doing it so we can get this grant.
Okay, I would, can I make one comment? I would want, I would ask Regina, watch her language.
What did I say?
The dam grant program.
Oh, the dam grant. I'm sorry, Sid.
I can't give anything past him.
No.
Anything you want to add, Dan?
No, it's it's the same exact resolution as before, except about the financial impact uh section in it. And um, you know, I was working with our our dam safety engineer that we work with through the For the for the grant. And then the the grant specialist had a different idea which would be in the resolution. So this is what she uh grant specialist wants.
We're at their mercy, so.
We're really going down with poopy river and now we're in into dam grants.
It is getting late. Imagine what it's gonna be like later.
Yeah, any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor. One, two, three?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Uh next one is came through uh Finance Committee. All the person Schumacher.
So R fifty nine twenty twenty authorizing and directing proper city officials To amend the twenty 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 four City of Stoughton Capital Improvements Plan CIP Budget uh as seen below On there uh The amounts in twenty twenty and twenty through twenty twenty two for the total of two million dollars. Uh and I so move that.
Second.
And anything you want to add?
Uh so this with uh with the schedule that uh that's down a little bit lower on that in that chart there. This is just a movement of some of the funds that were originally meant to be done in In years and and they're just kind of kicked the can down and and some things got shuffled around a little bit. That's about all I got on that. Unless Dan wants to kick in something else.
Yeah, he did put together some slides. You can blow through them quick, Dan. And if you guys have any questions, let us know.
So I I put this presentation together just so as everyone has a Butter grass with the entire project and the cost for each of the different phases and which is what's included in the different phases. Um so these are the three phases. Uh phase one is what we were just talking about with the first grant about The pedestrian bridge and doing everything we want that needs to happen to RDA property. Um I tied those items in with the other part with the whitewater park because it helps our grant applications and ranks higher because of those things. Um So this is what goes in phase one. You can see the the black line is the trail. So Originally, the trail was going to go from Fourth Street. You can see my cursor and all the way through to I believe this is Eighth Street. Um this property owner right here would then grant us an easement to create the trail through there. So it'll end here, but um or loop up if we can't get the easement to go through this property. Uh but if you look at Brink's uh concept uh rendering, he has Seventh Street extended here and this would be public park. So we most likely would loop the trail up to us to Seventh Street. And the DNR was okay with that change in the grants. Um this blue is the bank restoration work uh as part of the phase. So Um One one thing to notice here is this is an RDA property and doesn't include the powerhouse building. And the powerhouse building, this part is in phase two because it Would be would be part of a dam removal pro uh process. And this is the pedestrian bridge that we're applying for. So This next slide is the cost for the pedestrian bridge. So the cost estimate for it is for five hundred and forty six thousand dollars. Um the city's already received a grant for Um the the WEDC one and uh that grant can be used for the pedestrian bridge Uh bank restoration and the trail as well. It just makes sense to allocate the money towards the pedestrian bridges way um just the way the other grants worked out. Um so the this the WEDC grant money is in hand. Um but this is the grant that it was just approved to apply for. So If we're successful in getting this grant for a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars, uh the pedestrian bridge will be at no cost to the city. Um so this is the trail and the trail amenities part of the phase one. So this would be Fourth Street to Seventh Street. Um so We received a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars last year as far as the stewardship grant. And a hundred and thirty nine thousand three hundred seventy would be allocated towards the trail. Um the trail amenities include a solar trail lighting, um Bunches, trash cans, wayfinding signs, the typical things you see along the trail. Uh the trail, the trail is also um Expected to be twelve feet wide concrete. The riverbank restoration work, um this that that's a cost estimate we received for that. And Uh we're allocating ninety two thousand of the WEDC grant towards that and then Twenty nine thousand six hundred and ten of the uh stewardship grant. So the costs of those taxpayers would be a hundred and twenty one thousand six hundred sixty nine dollars. So this is, this is gonna be a better picture. This is the overall budget for phase one. Um the different colors are the different sections. So this is the Pedestrian bridge. Um the orange, I believe, is the riverbank restoration work and the yellow is The trail. So if you see the debt, the debt to do all the work Um for phase one would be the two hundred and fifty nine thousand four hundred and thirty eight dollar figure. Um so roughly, I mean, you could say a close to eighty percent of it's covered by grants if we're successful getting the stewardship Or the the grant that we just got approved to do for the resolution. Um so the phase two, and the phase two would be the actual whitewater park area um Improvements and then the trails, the plazas, the Fourth Street underpass. A trail from the whitewater park area to Water Street. Uh the dam removal and the river restoration remediation work. So it's basically everything you see in the rendering rendering here except for the trail up here. The bank restoration and the pedestrian bridge. So I just highlighted some of the areas where you think about the whitewater park area trails because it's a little confusing. Um but uh We had time to apply for the 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 same grant that uh Were successful getting last year, then we're just applying for this year for the pedestrian bridge in twenty twenty one. And um, you know, just talking with the grant specialist of DNR, they've been talking to Uh the Land Water Conservation Fund representatives and they like really like our project. So Um it's, it was good to hear. But um Those are the costs for it. And uh just to give you some ideas, I have some character images of What some of the plazas and stuff could look like. So there's terrace seating Um for the surfing wave area where people could watch and Or uh why that, why that is important is because they're for, you know, for other
Just Rodney Shield with just the phone. Sounds good.
So this area here would be terrace seating, sort of, sort of like this picture right here. But it also includes the spill But it also includes the spillway getting filled in and it'd be like the bank restoration for the powerhouse area. Um, but it also includes the underpass using one of the box culverts for the Forest Street Bridge. Uh, I believe this is ten feet wide and I know that for sure the vertical clearance here is eight feet, so it just, this is the minimum standards required for the grant. Um, the design would also allow, uh, in a situation for high or flooding where, um, the water, water would go over a wall into the third culvert, so, um, hurt flood mitigation. This is the cost for doing that as well. Um, so then for the last part of the trails, uh, Uniroil said that it'd give us a easement through their property, but this would, I believe this would be the city's property that would be exposed because the city owns the flood rights, uh, based on the deed. Uh, so this would also be a twelve-foot wide concrete trail with solar trail lighting. Um, so the whitewater park improvements, if we're successful with the grant application, would be roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. The timeline, um, uh, twenty twenty-two. So what do I mean by whitewater park improvements? So this southern bypass channel would, would be very similar to this, uh, the bottom left corner. And that is, uh, Fargo Cascades in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Uh, the updated design includes a surfing wave, uh, this is a pretty popular feature, it has good drawing power for, um, outer town visitors. And this picture is from Boise, Idaho. And, uh, two features downstream of Forest Street would be most likely like Manchester, Iowa, and that's what's the pic, that's where this picture is from. And one of the changes for this design included a dam removal where the, our concept plan didn't include a dam removal. So, uh, the dam program grant covers four hundred thousand dollars of it and the cost estimate to do the dam removal is five hundred and sixty-two thousand, twenty dollars. Um, so I get a lot of questions, what the mill pond would look like, uh, with the water level changes. Uh, it's roughly a three-foot water level drop in the mill pond area. So this is, this picture here is from Merrill, Wisconsin, where they removed the dam twenty years ago. And, uh, this area right here on the other opposite side of the river that you're facing, that's all was underwater at one point there. Um, so with, uh, right, this, this covers, this, these costs, uh, covers the remediation and restoration of that area. And this grant has been applied for already. So for the phase two, for the overall big picture of it, um, it's about three point eight million dollars worth of work. And we're hoping to get a little over two million dollars worth of grant funds to do it. And so just to go back a little bit, so the, the dam removal grant, uh, we'll know by June first if we're successful getting that. Um, the, the grant for the whitewater park improvements and the whitewater park trails, that's the same grant, uh, that we applied for last year and we're successful with. And the changes from year to year are pretty minimal, so I, I expect this to rank high in the future. Uh, this flood control grant, um, I'm not sure how competitive it is from year, year after year. I do know that Janesville, um, the last time the grant was available, received funds to do restoration after they removed their dam. So phase three is basically, uh, if we're gonna do a rental operation. So the market study, uh, looks at demand pricing and other factors for actual running the operation. Um, and that would really drive the scale of the size of the rental operation and the the facility that we would need. So that's why I have a question mark, uh, when that would actually, what the cost would be for the construction of that. You know, it could be something very simple and, or it could be something, you know, where we need a lot of room and space. So this slide covers the CIP changes and like Brett said earlier, a lot of funds got moved around, but there are also some things that ha- uh, changed in the design, like the dam removal and, uh, and that was all done, that was all due, uh, when we found out that this, the new updated design and, and earlier this winter. So it's something that happened way past when we did this, the budget for the CIP. Um, other changes included a surfing wave. Um, there was revised cost estimates provided by the engineer. We received a directive from the DNR how we should remediate the river because there is contamination in the mill pond. Um, so, and we also changed some things at phase one, how the grants, uh, funds would be allocated just so we can maximize our potential to get grants, um, for that phase. So this just captures all the changes and the difference. So I, I just get a lot of questions on like, you know, what this costs and, you know, what, some of the other things we could do with the money if we were going to spend it, um, in parks projects. So this aquatic center costs, that's from a feasibility study that McClellan had done in two thousand and nineteen. So original type of, you know, you see like the Sun Prairie in Fort Atkinson. So right now that both, the cost to build one of those would be seven to twelve million dollars. And there's a huge additional annual operational cost because you need a full-time manager, uh, to run those facilities. Uh, even a smaller type of, or to the neighborhood, which would be a neighborhood type, that would be like Manona Pool. And those cost four to six million dollars. And you'd also need a full-time, uh, pool manager to run those facilities as well. So that's why there's really high operational costs for those. Um, Manona last year, if you're familiar with their riverfront project, they built a new park there where they put a chilled ice rink, uh, outside. And to do all the development for that little area was one point eight million dollars.
Hmm.
Uh, Wanta Key, uh, two thousand and six, they built community center and it was six point seven million. Um, then one of the things that seems to be a trend are four-season park shelters. Uh, there's this need for community space. And this isn't an elaborate park shelter by any means and, uh, in whole man, and the cost to build one of those is four hundred thousand dollars. So a lot of these, um, facilities too, I mean, especially an aquatic center, they were, um, they're eligible for, uh, state funding through those, the same grant programs for the DNR for recreation, but just the way the, the grant applications are these days, it's not, they're not gonna rank high, so it's helpful that you'd actually receive funds for, for those types of, uh, projects. So I, I feel like I'm sort of beating a dead horse to these project benefits, but I think it's important to cover them, so, um, you know, economic impact is obviously a big one and, uh, you know, over the last month, you've been a lot of downtown businesses are probably hurting because of the COVID nineteen and, um, one of the major things that, uh, having one of those, a project like this would be drawing visitors to our downtown. And, you know, you can see that with the RDA, uh, hot committee survey where they, uh, people want experiences over tangible purchases. So you're, this is getting people downtown into this, into the area so they can go shopping. It's a secondary activity. And, um, you know, if you talk to people or officials from places that have these already in place, um, you know, it's their downtown anchor, especially in smaller communities like ours. Um, then you look at economic developments, so besides tourist impacts, um, Grand Rapids, I have this on our website or project website. But, uh, they, their, uh, economic impact study is much more encompassing than the one we had and it looks at, uh, property values um, by doing a project like this. So they have a lot of low utility, uh, uh, properties along the riverfront there. And, uh, I mean, we have a few, two, you know, the bus garage would be one of, um, um, the RDA property before, um, you know, right now. Uh, also the Uniroil has, uh, storage, uh, buildings on the river. Those that all be considered low utility. So by converting those types of properties into a high utility, um, you know, they're, they're, uh, expecting a hundred and seventeen million dollars in increased property values that they, and I believe it was about three million dollars annually that they were expecting in property taxes to be collected from, uh, their project. Obviously, Grand Rapids is a much bigger city, but you can just imagine like the, it would have to help the property, uh, tax situation here. And also, um, you know, outdoor amenities such as parks and trails are what young people want to attract them to your community. You know, uh, Stoughton has a declining enrollment since I, you know, the last ten years, I believe, from the school district. And, uh, you know, it's pretty important for the school district to, um, have children in, in the school system here. And there is a public safety benefit as well, so two summers ago, a kayaker was sucked underneath her dam and almost passed away because of it. Luckily, she survived. Um, I know twenty years ago, somebody did drown at the Dunkirk Dam, which is the same type of dam that we have here, so it is a public, public safety improvement. Then also going back, these are goals from our comprehensive water recreation plan and these are devised from, you know, community input and our, using our survey and other feedback during that plan and, you know, it was a high-ranking goals of ours to promote water recreation and bike, bicycle pedestrian facilities in the city. So, uh, now is a good time, if you have any questions, I can, I can take them.
This is helpful, Dan, thank you.
Dan, this is Jean and a particular, um, question that WEDEC, uh, WEDC grant from twenty eighteen. Is that, is that time limited in, in any way?
I'll let Jayman answer that question. It was actually the RDA applied for that grant.
Yeah, we actually filed an amendment to that grant agreement and they extended it out through December thirty-first, twenty-one, so we do have to get the project done. Um, so in relation to the bridge and a lot of the work down there, we're doing all the design in twenty and then the construction in twenty-one.
So it's, it's looking like we sh- we should be under the, the extension deadline?
Yes, we should be.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Dan, otherwise, um, I'm sure we'll be talking about this more in the future. Um, but we wanted to get you guys updated on where we're at. Obviously, you guys have been working hard on the budget a little bit.
So Mayor Sid? Yeah, um.
Go ahead Sid.
I, I, I hear what, uh, I hear what Dan is talking about in terms of drawing young families to the city. I think, uh, a much more prudent way to draw people to the city rather than a water, uh, whitewater park would be more affordable housing, but, um, uh, I appreciate Dan's work, you know, I, I'm, I remain skeptical about whitewater park because I'm not sure we're gonna get any bang for the buck for our city.
Okay. Fair enough. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we do have a motion on the table for the CIP amendment. Um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, I'll oppose then.
One opposed, okay, that motion carries. Thank you. You know, the nice thing about doing these online, if you need to get up and take a break, nobody will even know. All right, the next couple items are coming from the, uh, the planning department, um, they came through finance, let's see, maybe it's been through, this came through the plan commission. Rodney has two items here. One is the stormwater presentation, where he's pulling up and then the other one is a conditional use permit. Let me know when you're ready, Rodney.
I'm ready.
All right, we've got you transitioned to be the presenter, success.
Yes. So the stormwater, the annual stormwater report is really just an assessment of the activities that we've undertaken to, um, assess our permit requirements. We really look at several aspects of the permit, public education and outreach, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site pollutant control, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention and a stormwater sewer system mapping. Um, for many of you, you've seen this report annually completed and, and reported on. Generally, this takes place at the Public Works Committee as well. Um, but prior to the deadline, we had a public works meeting canceled and the second meeting in March was canceled, so we needed to submit this without your action uh, because it was due by the end of March, so that's been submitted. Um, I, I do want to reach out and thank all the person rees for having read through the material, um, and finding light correction that was necessary. Um, a couple of them, where we had listed unsure for a couple of items where we had outfalls that had been inspected. Um, in reality, those, those had been confirmed and the information was correct, just annotated incorrectly in the report. The supplemental material for this was also posted on the website. It's a very voluminous, um, document and illustrations of activities that we've done, um, throughout the, the year. Um, you can find it on our city's website under the stormwater utility, but most, um, most notably at the bottom, you can see the annual reports that have been completed all the way dating back to two thousand and six. Um, the annual report attachments for this year's project, um, indicate all of the different activities, illustrations, communications we've provided and try to educate and inform people as well as our illicit discharge, illicit discharge detection program where we actually go inspect outfalls throughout the year related to our stormwater discharge. Um, so I, I know that Jill's gonna get the sanitary sewer taken care of along the river before there's an illicit discharge we have to evaluate, but nonetheless, we do evaluate all the stormwater discharges, uh, to the river to see if there's any, uh, sheet of pollutants that shouldn't be there. And if so, then we trace those back and detect those, the, the origination of those and inspect and, uh, prevent those from occurring. One of the activities that took place in twenty twenty was filing, or in twenty nineteen was filing of the uh, pollutant prevention plan for the new public works facility. We put together a plan that, um, uh, Director A Bear and his team worked through and educated on to keep their site uh, pollutant-free and manage their contaminants properly so that we don't have, uh, discharges occurring to the, the waterways as well. So what we're really seeking tonight is, is a post-approval of the resolution authorizing the middle of the annual report. Uh, but certainly I'm here to answer questions and if somebody would like to have a deeper discussion on any aspect of the stormwater management, um, program, I'd be more than happy to speak with them offline as well.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that carries, thanks. I know that's a lot of work Rodney and to summarize it that quickly is pretty impressive.
You got the abbreviated version.
All right, next item comes from the plan commission, uh, all the person Caravelo, would you like to introduce it?
Sure. Uh, this is our, yes, our, this is R sixty-one of twenty twenty, approving a conditional use permit request by Zinc Power at twenty-four forty-three County Highway A, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Uh, who was the second, my internet went out.
That would be me.
Tom.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you're back. All right. And, uh, anything you want to add to this, uh, Alder Person Caravelo?
Um, sure. This is a request by Zinc Power, which is. Planning to build a facility at this location, uh, adjacent to Stoughton Trailers. And this facility would be for, uh, zinc coating of some trailer components for Stoughton Trailers and, uh. Let me see. I think it looks like sixty employees potentially at full operation and. No, they, they claimed when we talked to them at planning, no volatile organic compound. Releases and I know Alder Schumacher had some. Good environmental questions for him on that sort of thing and, uh. That's it. And I'm sure Rodney would have some more detailed information if there is questions.
Any noise concerns?
There is not. Um, this, this is Rodney. Uh, this is a site, a heavy industrial use site. Um, so it is, there isn't any anticipated excessive outside noise from this operation. This conditional use application really is to accommodate four aspects of the project. Even though it's heavy industrial zoning, um, it conditional uses in our code require heavy industrial uses to be considered as conditional use. The other, uh, three that are necessary for this CUP is. The authorization of an accessory structure of up to five thousand square feet. So they have more than one building on this site. And also to increase the maximum building height from forty five feet to sixty two feet. Which is how they, um, can manage their equipment and their production process. And then also increase the maximum smokestack height above the roof. From ten feet to fifteen feet. And I think that's what sparked some of the discussion that. Alder Caravelo mentioned that Mr. Schumacher had inquired about. Um, smokestack might not be the right terminology, but it certainly is a discharge pipe. Um, and it does extend, uh, from ten feet to fifteen feet and requires the conditional use aspect of this permit as well.
Thank you. Uh, this is Jean. When they're up to full capacity, um, are they planning a twenty four hour operation or, uh, shift work?
I don't think they gave us that level of detail, uh, but certainly their, their primary customer is. Is intended to be trailers. Um, but they did not create a twenty four hour operation, although it, it could be in the heavy industrial district.
And I hadn't gotten a chance to, to really dig into their chemical engineers about. Their full process. I'm sure some of it they wouldn't divulge anyway, but, uh, I mean, I'm fairly familiar with zinc plating. Um. And I'll, I'll still try and connect with them to get a few more bits of information because I'm curious. With some of their smokestacks on what like their wet, wet scrubber and dust collection. Things are so that we're not getting, um. That we're not getting things out into the atmosphere and, and then downstream to on homes and rivers and things like that. So I do plan to follow up with them.
Rodney, can you throw the maps on there quick just for reference so you can kind of. Kind of show where it is?
Yeah, thank you for highlighting the need to do that. Um, Stoughton Trailers is the principal, um, facility on this campus. As you know, we've carved out through a certified survey map, the area that's depicted on the map on the eastern edge of the former Stoughton Trailer Site. Just to the east of them is our public works property and, and public works operation. Um, obviously any discharge, um, this being a new construction. They certainly intend to construct it by state of the art standards, but certainly meeting all discharge requirements as reported at the, the plan commission.
Yeah, I think they call it German technology and they were proud of it.
My main concern was to the southeast of that with that wetland that's, that's in that area and that picture that you have. The one prior, the one you were just scrolling down to Rodney. That one there, that wetland that's down in that southeast corner.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That would be my primary concern as far as how they're grading it and whether they have any sort of containment. Uh, in case anything were to leach out of the building.
That was my concern too. Thanks Brett for bringing that up because those are exactly my questions as well.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yep.
And would it make sense to postpone a vote until we have answers to that?
I, I don't think we have, certainly the points were raised at the plan commission. Um, this conditional use permit is really applicable to the, the points that I itemized. Not specific to the, the operation. Certainly we inquired about them related to the smokestack. Um, I, I think the, the regulatory agencies will have to do their due diligence, as will we. As this project moves through the construction and permitting process.
So when would be the appropriate time it has come back through planning to get at that?
No, it does not have to come back through planning. Planning's already approved the site and building plans. The conditional use is the last regulatory, city approval except for permitting. We have to issue permits. Related to the action. And so we can't issue permits until they actually, we can't issue local permits until we have the state permits approved. And submitted to us.
But that never comes back to console then, right?
It does not.
They will do all their permitting according to DNR and EPA requirements. So. The, the hard part to it is we don't have any reason that we can hold them back.
Not at this time, unfortunately. Yeah. I just wish their site. Wasn't so close to the wetland. That was more. And more of the higher, hard packed soil.
In looking at some of their, uh, glitzy promotional materials, they do have, they have a couple of facilities that are built like. Right within rivers or like directly on rivers. So, uh, some of their facilities are, are fairly impressive, but you know, that doesn't mean that. Things can happen.
Aye.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I think one of. My concern was, you know, now that we started. Speaking to the environmental aspects is, uh, the folks. Up, uh, you know, by racetrack park there in the neighborhood that's just to the. Northeast, but you know, that's like has been stated, that's going to be a DNR EPA. Kind of.
No.
As long as they don't have any VOCs coming out of their smokestacks, they don't have to worry about the paint falling off their car. However, they might have to worry about their car being zinc coated.
Well, they won't rust anyway.
That's that part of their benefit package.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
I, I guess I have a question. Rodney, maybe you know some of the permitting. Don't they have to have some. Isn't there a regulation of how much setback to a waterway and with the wetland? Because it seems like they're right on top. Very close, you know, within seventy five feet of the wetland. Isn't, don't they have to be set back further than that? Or is that not the case?
I don't think, I don't think this depicts the actual land properly. Th- this depicts a property line. I, I think this is more than seventy five feet off the property line even at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just had a, I had a quick question and that is, you know, we've talked about Stoughton Trailers and being a cooperative. Uh, effort from the city for Stoughton Trailers is, is this going to be another? Uh, I think, uh. Cooperative arrangements that we have with Stoughton Trailers to. Uh, keep them here and. Going great guns for our city.
Stoughton Trailer certainly sees this as a beneficial, um, entity. They're settling off this piece of property. To have this value added service to, um, improve their product lines. So I think it certainly will be something that'll enhance their product.
Yeah, and I just, I just raise it because, you know, in the last couple of years, we've been talking about that Stone Trivers had some options to. Build, uh, additional, either in our city or in another locality. So. This might, this might just help in terms of our relationship with Stoughton Trailers.
At least, this is. Lisa had made a point before and asked a question about, is this something that we need to act on now? And I, I never heard a response to that.
I, I don't know that it's time sensitive, other than they were expecting to receive approval. We're really just focusing on the conditional use aspect of it, these four bulleted points. Not to say that the discussion hasn't been good, but these are the items that, uh, the conditional use is applicable to.
So not all those formal concerns that we were just asking.
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I think the concerns will be addressed by the DNR and EPA. Um, I know they, they'd like to get building and then Stoughton Trailers is also going to repurpose part of their shop. So I think that, you know, certainly overall, this is a really good project for, for everybody. Um. We would certainly do our part to monitor the situation and work with them to make sure that, um, you know, things are. Being done properly out there, but they're, they're a pretty large company. They take a lot of pride in, in what they do and their environmental aspect of their business. And that was one of the first things they talked about when we met them. Was, uh, you know, how environmentally friendly, uh, their processes and their buildings are. And so I, I feel, you know, pretty comfortable with what they're going to do out there.
And thankfully they don't use cyanide any longer.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, there is a motion on the floor. Um. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And is there anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you, Rodney. Um, the next two items. I believe are coming from Stoughton Utilities. Um. And I'll pull them up on my screen here. Um. Did you want to introduce these, uh, Regina? Or do you want Jill to start the conversation?
Uh, I, I, I guess I can introduce them and then Jill can chime in. Uh, the first one, number twenty one, and it's just a discussion on possible action regarding the recommendation for rebid. Of the one dash twenty twenty alternate bid number one for the sanitary sewer works as a separate contract. And Jill. Really is kind of briefed you on that before, um, when we talked about the Parisi bid. And. How. We couldn't accept both, uh, the base bid and the. Alternative bid for Parisi because the Parisi alternative bid was so much more. Than everybody else's alternative bid and it, it just put us way over budget. So. And, um. Utilities, we decided, and I think they, uh, utilities actually presented that it'd be best to. Separate them out and rebid just the alternative part of it. So, go ahead.
Are you willing to make that motion?
Yes, I would like to make that motion to go for a rebid.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is your. Second by Schumacher. Anything you want to add, Jill?
Um, if I could, I just, I went and did a quick little run through as far as the number of houses, the, um, I guess I'd back up a little bit. The reason for actually been bringing this forward as a rebid, which we typically don't do is, is go through authorization for bidding a project. Um, is ultimately because we had reauthorized or reallocated budget dollars in twenty twenty to this project. Those, there is still dollars available, um, to this project for that alternate bid. I think there's a possibility. Um, if those bids came back, particularly the low bid, there may not be a need, but if we get more in that middle range with a rebid, we could be looking at a need to at least discuss. Um, a budget addition. Um, now I know Jayman's looking at those, that. Possibility right now. We don't know exactly where that'll sit, but desire to move this project forward. Um, as we're kind of sitting here, I hadn't done this previously, but the interceptors, the sewer that actually runs along the river is considered an interceptor sewer. We have about a hundred and fourteen homes right now that actually go to that section of pipe along the river. If we're able to finish this project, so do this alternate bid, rebid that and get that constructed this year. Even if none of the properties, um, on prospect moved to the new pipe in the street. We'd now move that a hundred and ten to ten. Um, so it's a significant piece. If we did have pipe failure along the river there, we would be dealing with much less of an environmental impact. Than if we leave that sewer in place and, and I feel. I have concerns. Not that we couldn't rebid this. If these bids come back again high, we could reject all those bids and choose a bid again in twenty twenty one. But I think the environmental piece of this is significant enough to move forward with this project. Um, basically rebid the alternate, um, see how those bids come back and, and ideally move forward with the project if those bids are, uh, reasonable.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Um, item twenty two, do you want to start this one out as well, Regina?
Um, sure. It's just the approval of a communication cabinet easement located at Stoughton Utilities, well, number four at nine twenty one North Van Buren Street. And I guess I'll just immediately, because Jill's right there, she can. And I, you know, I would make the emotion that we accept this. So we have. A second, that'd be great.
I'll second that also.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Jill.
Thank you. Um, we've been working with TDS since probably about November of last year, looking at, they've got six nodes. Um, and those nodes are basically needed to have the distribution, um, system put forward for Stoughton. They looked at, uh, the possibility of having any of those nodes as possible on public lands. The only one is node six. Ultimately worked out to be on the well number four site. We've been through a variety of negotiations with them since November. Uh, for this particular site and feel at this point in time, this is a reasonable, um, it's a fifteen by fifteen easement. We've got a lot of land there. It will not be impactful to our present operations as well as our future operations. Um, so recommend that we do move forward with this easement with TDS.
All right. Any questions or comments? Probably been seeing TDS out there pulling fiber.
They were in my front yard this morning.
Patient with, um, regarding social distancing and restoration. So if you see something that, uh, you think is questionable out there, please let us know.
I would, I would add that, that was one of my comments earlier, um, because I had, I've had some concern by residents.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? That carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn. Who was that by?
Lisa.
And a second by?
Everyone. Everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
We did pretty good, you know, the Madison's first one was eight hours.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm. Yeah. So we did pretty good, everybody. Thanks a lot.
Well, thanks for pointing it out, everybody.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
I was glad to be able.